Get a turn on the mic.
Yes.
Now we're on. Should be good to go.
Okay, welcome. I'd like to call the order, the zoning commission meeting for December the 7th, 2023. First on the list is roll call.
Ms. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Geis?
Here.
Ms. Stalter?
Here. Next, we approve the agenda.
I make a motion to rearrange the agenda by doing case 838 first still, but let's do case 839 second and 837 third.
I'll second that.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes, I want to clarify something first. I want to make certain that all the board members present today have had ample opportunity, have received the agenda in time, have reviewed the video from the last meeting, and have looked over the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Jeff.
Okay. Do you all have any questions about what you saw on the minutes or on the video?
No.
Okay, all right. Welcome back, you all that are back and welcome to our meeting. This is an open meeting, an open public meeting, and what you just heard was that the cases that we are here to listen to will be in the order of 838 first, and that is one that we will hear summary from the staff first, and then we will listen to 838, and after that, 839, just to be clear. Okay, so, staff?
Okay, the first case before us tonight, number 838, submitted by Luke Weston, who is here with us tonight, is a fairly straightforward rezoning request. Just a little background, in the early to mid eighties, when the industrial park across Orchard Lane was established, at that time, it was thought that it would be a good idea to give many properties in the township along Alpha, Dayton-Zenia Road, and down to, all the way to the river, the opportunity to establish businesses on the forward part of their property, fronting Dayton-Zenia Road. So a rezoning took place that involved almost all of those properties, on the south side at least, of Dayton-Zenia Road. So many lots were split by two different zoning designations. Part of the lot remained either residential or agricultural, and the forward 200 feet or so of the parcels were rezoned to office, in anticipation of the possibility that office uses would be desirable, doctors, et cetera, and to give owners of those properties an opportunity to do that easily, without a lot of individual rezonings or conditional use hearings, in order to allow the office use. Mr. Weston's property was one of those properties. His property, about one acre on a, running on a curve on Dayton-Zenia Road across from the school, was rezoned to office in its entirety. It has never been an office. No offices were ever built there, and Mr. Weston and his neighbors on either side of his property have now come to realize that the official survey that I have come later to find out had never been recorded, but it's there. The official survey of his property contains a few minor mistakes. Imagine if you will a property line along a driveway, and the property line is two degrees off of being precisely accurate, the way it should be. Well, if you resurvey those properties and file the corrected surveys, what you're going to end up with is three different properties, each of which have two different zoning designations in them. And then to correct that, to make the zoning uniform across all three properties, or even within one property, it's going to take a separate rezoning. So they have, these neighbors have rightly, in my opinion, decided, well, let's do the rezoning first. Let's, if Luke Weston, if you're willing, will have your property rezoned to residential, just like ours is. I didn't mention that. They were both zoned residential R1AA. And let's do the rezoning first. That way, when the corrected survey lines are recorded, all the properties will already be correctly zoned to R1AA. And so that's what we're attempting to do tonight, is to approve a rezoning of this piece of property on Dayton-Zenia Road, from O1 office to R1AA, one acre residential, and just like the properties on either side of it, so that they can proceed with straightening out their property line difficulties. The difficulties are minor, but if, if the survey was recorded before we do the rezoning, then we've got six rezoning hearings to have, each for a slice of property that's about 400 square feet. It just doesn't make sense. So we're going to do it all right now. Mr. Weston, as I said, is here. If any member of the board has questions of me, that's fine, and you may ask the applicant as well.
Thank you. Mr. Weston, do you have anything that you'd like to share with the board?
No thanks.
I see a list here of the members, or the owners, within 500 feet, and those announcements went out correctly.
That's correct.
Okay. So right now, this is a time that I would ordinarily open the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone that's on a list of 500 feet from that property that have something that they would like to share with us? Okay. Is there anyone here that is totally against this application? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that open portion of the meeting, so that we can move forward. Zoning members, do you have any questions you'd like to ask the staff or the applicant?
No.
I'm good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Jeff, come on. Come on, Jeff.
Oh, I can write application and everything here.
Got the case now?
If you still got it.
Make a motion that we approve the application for case number 838, as stated.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
We are ready.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes. Moving on to case eight, number, eight, number 839. Is that correct?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're doing 839.
Be safe.
You're welcome to stay if you wish. You don't have to.
Just opening up seats.
It's going to get interesting.
There are two seats open now that you can move from outside, come in.
Okay, the next case is 839, which involves a parcel within Stone Hill Village, located at the corner of Treibine and Dayton-Zenia Road. And let me say, before I start into this, this is the next step in the zoning, after the zoning process. This property has been zoned for this purpose since, not for this exact use, but for commercial purposes, since 2015. And it has been zoned for development under the rubric of Stone Hill Village since 1992. So the zoning came first. Now, what we're looking at tonight is called a site plan, specific site plan. And in Stone Hill Village, which is in total over 1,200 acres, and consists of dozens of different parcels designated for certain different, many different uses, not infinite different uses, but different uses, the development of Stone Hill Village has taken place over that 30-plus years since its original rezoning in the 90s. Originally, Stone Hill Village included multifamily dwellings and a commercial zone to be located on several, three 15-acre parcels on a portion of Ankeny Road that doesn't exist, on the east side of Treibine. After years of residential development and looking at the limitations placed on Stone Hill Village from the outset, for the maximum number of dwelling units, and number of dwelling units per segment of Stone Hill Village, we realized that we were in a little bit of trouble. We had to reconfigure the, we had to not reconfigure, reapportion where the commercial was going to be, where the multifamily was likely to be, and so on and so forth. These were all projections made across the township at a time when there was very little experience with planned unit developments. So in 20, at around the same time, at the time the school, before, just before this new school was built, the school system decided that that 15-acre slice on a, on a proposed future extension of Ankeny Road that would have connected down to Hilltop, that that wasn't big enough, and that the school system couldn't afford to build the road. And so they requested of the owners of Stone Hill a reconfiguration, a revision of the master plan that had been approved by legislation. So it could only be changed by legislation. And in, throughout the late, the second half of 2014 into 2015, and early even 2016, we, we worked with owners, developers, and so on and so forth, and came up with a plan that accommodated the excision of the school property, the new school property where it is now, and revised all of the density calculations for Stone Hill Village, for the Stone Hill Village as a whole, but also for segments of Stone Hill Village, segment by segment. And at the time, and according to public processes much like this, Stone Hill Village got a new master plan. And that master plan called for commercial and higher-density residential uses to be moved to the southern part of the property, the Stone Hill Village properties, including the property we're considering tonight. I apologize if that's a lengthy and tedious explanation, but how we got here is kind of important, because what you're going, what you're about to find out is that the land is already approved for commercial development by zoning. The zoning is correct. And even the use that we're going to consider for this particular segment tonight, self-storage units, was approved as a, as a conditional use by the Board of Zoning Appeals in June of this past year, was that it? In June. So all of these decisions that precede looking at the site plan have been made. Okay, that's our starting point. Now, I'm going to ask Randy to call the property up there, and we'll see exactly what we're considering here.
Stand by.
From the beginning of Stone Hill Village, Mr. Robert Nutter has long said to me, when I first started, he said, "My vision for Stone Hill Village, the actual physical vision I have in my head, as I look at this legacy of my family's, is the Calumet Horse Farm in Kentucky." Okay? And, and so when you look at the white fences, and you look at the homes, and so on and so forth, know that that was at least in the back of someone's mind as development proceeded. Now, the property on the corner, then, I will only say that the self-storage units, you may well wonder, well, how's that going to resemble a horse farm? And you're about to find out. I'm going to let those explanations up to the people who are going to do it. But this is the parcel we're considering tonight. Treibine Road is on the right-hand side, north and south, Dayton-Zenia Road on the, on the bottom of the screen. And the, the leftmost parcel that you see singled out there is a Cape Cod house, a single-family dwelling that still, still exists. It's in the process of being sold right now to Stone Hill Village, but I have no idea where those negotiations are. I don't get involved in that stuff. So the plan for the self-storage units is for half of the actual property that will eventually be involved, maybe a little less than half, and occupies the, the actual corner of the intersection between Treibine and Dayton-Zenia Road. At that, I'm going to allow the, the developers of the property to explain in some detail what it is they're doing here, and show you some images of what they plan to build, if you will. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Tom Kretz, 1202 Stallion Run, Beaver Creek Township, 45385.
I'm Mike Anderson with Vanata Engineering, 570 Congress Park in Washington Township.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Amrane, do you have any of those images from the conditional use?
Yes.
And so, just to, not to beleaguer those, but to give you, just to paint a story, and kind of where we're at. So this piece of land, while being, I liken it to the friendlies that everyone drove past in Beaver Creek, on the corner of North Fairfield and Dayton-Zenia. From a development standpoint, you look at that site, and the reason, one of the reasons why it sat for sale so long, almost six, seven years, is it was one of those sites that you can see, but you can't get to. And it was, it's a very difficult piece, if you think about turning left into it or left out of it, from either direction, whether you're heading southbound on Fairfield, or whether you're heading eastbound on Dayton-Zenia. So I liken, this property is very similar to that, in that there has been significant constraints that were put on this, this corner specifically, and this piece of what's called Bluegrass Crossings, from the county engineer, as far as access from Dayton-Zenia was denied, that there would never be granted access from Dayton-Zenia, and that the only access into this parcel would come from Overbrook Boulevard. So as a starting point, that limits the development potential of this site. So a little bit of backstory, my wife and I, my wife Kim is here this evening, gentleman named Jim Connell, our builder, is here as well. We've done this before. This is not our first self-storage facility. We've, we've built this product before. We came before the BZA in past lives. I don't remember going through the specific site plan process, but it might have been different back then. I think we were already zoned properly, and it was, there was no issue there. But everything that we were asked to do, we did. Everything, so we followed the rules. We built a successful business. We did sell that business. And it's been going on 10 years, it's a little over 10 years now, since we sold that business. And so we'd like to do it again. And we'd like to do it where we live. So we actually live in Stone Hill Village, so we drive by this corner and this intersection, these flashing red lights that should be stoplights. And we drive by this every day. So we, we know the character of the land. We know the character of Stone Hill Village. So met with Mr. Nutter and Mary Nutter, and discussed, you know, what could be a low-impact use. And so when we talk about low-impact, and what a lot of folks are here this evening talk about is density of housing, there will be a maximum of three toilets on this property. There will be no one living in these units. This is an amenity, essentially, for residential neighborhoods, essentially, and so for, for a residential community. And Beaver Creek Township is a bedroom community for most, in most cases, until you get into some of the industrial areas. So from a product standpoint, Mr. Amrane, if you can, or Mr. Grudge?
I'm going to get to the slide, and then if you want to continue.
Keep going, keep going.
That one right there?
Yeah, no, that's the elements, I'm sorry. This would be from the conditional use. This would have the, the...
Next page is in there.
This is, this is the Stone Hill Village elements. Keep going. It may not be in that packet. While Randy's looking for that, essentially, if you think of, if anyone's driven up Treibine Road, and you've seen the, what a lot of people refer to as the barn, or the clubhouse. So Stone Hill Village has the, it's a white barn, has hunter green, high-pitched roof. It was a historic barn, essentially, that was restored. And so if you think of that barn, and then you think of an equestrian building, for lack of a better term. So if you add dormers and kublas to those buildings, on our site plan, if you look at the buildings that are on the perimeter of the site, so those that, that front Treibine Road, those that front Dayton-Zenia Road, and those that front Overbrook Boulevard. So, Mr. Grudge, if you can go back maybe just to the site plan, we can do that, and I can just paint the picture there, and then rotate for us. And zoom in a little bit. Yep. So in that upper right-hand quadrant, we'll call it, of that site, so those, those buildings that front to the north on the Overbrook side, that front to the east on the Treibine side, and front along Dayton-Zenia, so...
Wonderful color.
Those units are contemplated, that they would, they essentially will look like horse barns, is the best way to say it. So there will be no units that open facing the street. All of the doors on those units will actually be on the interior of the site. So there's actually going to be no aisleway or paved driveway on the outside of those buildings. So what Mr. Nutter said is he never wants to see a U-Haul truck with a door open, and people loading or unloading their things. Not because he's against that, but because that goes against the character of the developers. And so what we, what we have contemplated there are 412 pitch roofs, which is a high pitch. When you think of storage facilities, they're generally flat-roofed. So we've gone to significant cost to elevate that roof. All hunter green, white buildings. And then we're actually going to use the garnet colors from Calumet Farms. We have a, we actually have pictures of Calumet Farms. We went, and we took those pictures, and we're integrating those into, into this design concept. I know this is not a design review board, but this is the product that's going there. And it's intended so that when you drive north on Treibine, or you drive south on Treibine, you see this, this, essentially, these buildings that, again, have dormers, have, have kublas. We even have treatments that are going to go on the outside of those buildings that will make it look like every 40 feet, every 30 to 40 feet, there will be the, what resembles a horse stall. So it'll be, it'll be faux. It will not be real. It will not open, from a security standpoint. But you literally will have that, that look and feel of the product when you drive down Treibine Road, or when you turn on Dayton-Zenia, or when you, even when you turn on Overbrook. So interior of the site, it's a, it's a modern self-storage facility. This phase, this phase one is about 70,000 square feet, maybe a little bit more than that, just depending how the office is finally configured. You might ask, why is there so much land in between buildings E and F? And it's because that's where all the easements run through there. So there's a 48-inch sanitary line, there's a water line, a gas line, and there's electric overhead. So from that standpoint, that land in between those two buildings and Overbrook Boulevard cannot be developed. You can't build on it. You might be able to pave over it, but you could never certainly build on it. So this will be, like I said, a modern facility. We'll have limited hours. We committed to that. There'll be no vehicle rental or anything of that nature, so we don't need extra parking spaces, you know, out front to rent U-Hauls. We won't do that here. That's governed by the HOA, has, it's, which is much more restrictive, when you look at the requirements there, than what zoning would require. So Mr. Anderson, essentially, is the engineer on the project. We've spent countless hours, and this is, I think, our ninth revision to the site, to try to make it work and flow. We've widened the aisles wider than any facility you'll see in Beaver Creek, including the previous one that we built. So we've gone with wider aisles. I like to, it's a joke, but it's true, that every U-Haul driver is an amateur U-Haul driver. It's fact. So, so intentionally, with the investment that we're putting in here, the concept is to make those aisles wide, make them comfortable. We've doubled the ADA parking spaces. We, all, the building code requires a certain number of units are ADA compliant. That, that's been around for years, that requirement. So we'll have double the parking spaces. We'll have all the units that we're required to have. And circulation of the site was, we've gone through that a number of times, from stormwater management. The county did kind of a disservice in that they put a, kind of an ugly rock trench along Treibine Road right there. We've got to get on them to take care of that and maintain it. But it didn't make sense to put a, kind of a pond next to a ditch, if you know what I mean. It just becomes unsightly. So we worked and worked to try to reconfigure and come up with one pond. We actually worked, there we go. So that is from Calumet Farms. And so if you look at the color scheme, you've got the white building, the hunter green roofs, the kublas, the dormers, the garnet trim. And so that's the, the character of the buildings that will be facing and fronting all of those. And like I said, that's been through the design review, design review board, maybe, I don't know if Mr. Amrane said that or not. This, everything you're seeing here has been through the design review board at Stone Hill Village. So it's all been approved. The landscape plan that we submitted, the lighting plan that we submitted, again, their restrictions are tighter than, than the townships, frankly. So, but that's the look and feel. When you look at that building, and you think, we won't have that many, we'll call it black squares. We'll kind of have every, you know, every fourth or every third, but it'll look like that. So the Nutters were very happy, just that there'd be an equestrian feel. When you look at the white fence treatments that were required to do because of Stone Hill, again, not because of the township, we have stone columns that we have to construct with white fencing and landscaping. David Listerman essentially had to approve the landscaping, the species of plants, even the, you know, down to, the, the entire list, again, is far more restrictive than township. So here to answer any questions you have. Hope we painted a decent amount of pictures. We understand the product. We understand the business. We know the business. And we, we do intend to put a 60-foot flagpole on there. So that may not be seen, but we did that at our previous facility. The people that bought it haven't flown that flag since we sold it to them, and our son's military, we want to fly that flag.
Any questions?
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
Well, as I look at the site plan here, my memory serves me, and it probably is failing more than I care to admit. The flashing light between, on Zenia, Dayton-Zenia Road and Treibine, as you referred to.
Correct.
I thought there was a plan to, to put a...
A roundabout.
A roundabout. So how does that impact your plan here?
That right-of-way essentially was donated, and, and a long time ago, years ago. And so all of that right-of-way essentially is already, this is offset back from those right-of-ways.
So it's accommodating?
Right. County engineer already has that, that roundabout approved. My understanding is that she has funding approved. It's going to be sometime in probably 2026.
Okay. Okay.
But this fully accommodates that. And, you know, we're, we're pulled back even from Overbrook and from Trebine there as well. So...
Second question I have, and it's not obvious to me, I can't tell other than maybe the access road on Overbrook Boulevard, is that the only access road?
That is. So...
So you won't be able to see from either Dayton Zania or Trebine, any, there won't be any access from either of those roads?
The county engineer prohibited that. So she does not want, well, and so if you think about what other uses could you have used this land for, it, it is so limited. Because anything that was retail or fuel, like a gas station, you'd think, why would there be a gas station right on this corner? Everybody can see it. It's because you can't turn right into it and you can't turn right out of it on Trebine. If, all the traffic has to go through Overbrook. Same on Dayton Zania, there's no secondary access permitted. It's actually, it's stamped on our drawings. It's stamped on the survey. No access permitted from Dayton Zania. So, so there's one primary entrance. So if that...
Here's another question.
This section here that isn't currently part of your plan, is that envisioned to be in the, in the future?
It is envisioned.
Okay.
Correct. Yep.
So it'll...
And when it, when it becomes a reality, we'll have to go back through a process. We've spoken with Mr. Amrane about that and Mr. Granger.
Could it look and feel like what you, surrounding it?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
And I just wanted to clarify that there are no residential houses along that Overbrook that would have been within the five hundred feet that people are here, right?
It's bush-hogged weeds right now.
That's what I thought. Okay, just clarifying. Any other questions?
I got a question. What about RV boat storage?
Not in any of this section. So these units are too small. They're only ten-foot wide and either, and either five feet deep, ten feet deep, fifteen feet, twenty feet deep, twenty-five feet deep. That's the, that's the depth, the max depth on these units. On a Phase Two, then we do contemplate that.
But not outside the storage?
Nothing outside. And even if the township didn't want it, Stone Hill Village prohibits it. So no outdoor storage of any kind, no vehicle storage outdoor of any kind. So no vehicle rental of any kind.
So if I understand this correctly, then not only you got to abide by the counting the township, but you're also underneath the HOA?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
And the gates around are for snow removal, like into the detention pond, and that is for snow removal, to push snow in there?
They are, from a functionality, they are snow. From a cost, they are very decorative.
Yeah. I see them on all the corners and I assume that's what that's for.
Yeah, these are, think of these as gates. So if you go back to some of those pictures and you look at some of the gates, that the intent is to follow the character, again, of Calumet Farm and make this look like an equestrian facility when you drive by it.
There's just one thing missing from the equestrian facility.
There's extra acreage for now. If I can graze horses, please let me know.
I have a couple, I'll share with you. So one question I do have about it is the process with the HOA and the design team. They can reverse decisions at any time?
Not once those decisions are granted.
So it's not something that you go back and say, we changed our mind on what we'd like to do?
Sign and date it. Yeah. If it, if it were verbal, in my world, I always tell people it's not in writing, it doesn't exist.
Exactly. It's my question.
And so all of these approvals are in writing.
Okay. And the process is firm then? It's not a reversible process?
It's been going, that process has been moving since the nineties. And Stone Hill was built on that.
The reason that I ask the question is, I want to say it's been a couple of years now where we had some discussion with another applicant about some storage facilities nearby. And there were questions about whether or not that facility was really going to do what they said they were going to do. But what I'm hearing you say is that the zoning being under, within the PUD and within the homeowners association, it's tight?
It's very tight.
Okay.
And we shop at Kroger's. And we, my wife and I are very visible in the community. We're business owners. And we do what we say we have. We demonstrate that. Life's too short.
It is. Okay. I have no other questions. Anyone else here have questions?
I have none.
Okay. Because, do I need to open for discussion with the public? I don't think so.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, I do? Okay. All right. I apologize. So at this time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the meeting to the public so that if there's anyone who wanted to talk to us about this, it would be great. I would like to listen to those for the application to begin with, if there's anyone that wants to speak on behalf of the applicant. Anyone opposing? Anyone that wants to speak neutrally for or against, don't really care one way or another, that wants to speak? Oh, please come. Okay, please come up to the podium. And simply state your name and address.
I'm Rita Reyer, thirteen seventy-two Windsor Drive. And I'm not here for that, but I'm just curious, because I do live near Stone Hill Village. And that's the first I've heard of it. And so I see a lot of sprawl happening in the township. And as I'm looking for a property and as I'm looking at what I, what I originally, why I moved to Beaver Creek Township and all the reasons why I moved there, was not for a lot of commercial development. And I see a lot of sprawl. I see Trebine going over toward the soccer fields, I see it on the Narrows. And as I'm looking up properties, I see a lot of commercial properties don't have the tax burdens that the residentials do. And so as I see, whether it's a storage shed, or whether it's a hotel or apartment complex, I'm curious on the burdens on the residential of all of us. Because we're hitting a lot of, we're hitting a time where the taxes are going up. And you guys just got your tax increase. I know mine went up like forty percent. And, you know, I just wonder, with all the sprawl and all the things that are happening, so this is just neutral, it's not anything to do with the, with the shed or anything. But just the curiosity of how Beaver Creek Township is really, what, what their path is going forward. Because I just, it's not what I thought I was going to be. When I look at my res, you know, my neighborhood, it's not what they thought it was going to be. And it's turning out to be something that's a shock. And, and we're pretty involved in the community and I don't hear about a lot of it. And so, you know, I'm not wanting to see sheds or, you know, densely populated apartments or, I know that's not what you called them, but townhomes or apartments. And, and so from our point of view, you know, the tax burden and all the requirements that are levied upon us, and how it's growing over the community and what our responsibilities are, because I see a lot of people moving out. And because of the, the burdens. And so I just wanted to, as you move forward with all the businesses and all the things, and I, I know the, the increase of, I know the next one is for, for development on Indian Ripple, you know, the, the cost structure and the burden on public facilities, the burden on the school systems, and the, you know, and all that's going to come from our pocketbooks. So, you know, I just wanted to bring that forward as a neutral party. So...
Thank you for sharing.
Okay.
Well, I apologize. When we have an open portion of the meeting, we ask that you do not clap, boo, or offer opinion outside of who's speaking. Thank you very much. It helps us maintain order. At this time, there's no one else to speak on that topic. I would like to go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. And at this time, the zoning commission will discuss the case and I'll entertain a motion. So, discussion? Anything? Anything? Okay. Would you like to put forward the motion?
All right. We have to get all the case numbers set right.
I believe in you.
I will make a motion.
I apologize.
Sorry, what?
Am I allowed to comment on this?
I do apologize.
You can't, then.
We, yes, we can't, not...
In the public?
No.
In the public portion.
In the public portion. However, I did close it, but what I think he's pointing out that is he is serving as an alternate and he has voice but not vote. So I, I would like to hear what you have to say.
This is a nice project. This is the way projects should be done. It's been done responsibly and it's been done...
Mr. Trebine, can you step up to the mic, please? Can you step up to the mic? Microphone ready, please.
And will you state your name, just so that people are aware of who you are? We apologize.
My name is Jim Hill. I am known as the alternate. This project is a nice project. It's been nicely done. It's been nicely handled. I wish all the projects that came before us were handled in this manner. This adds value particularly to the Stone Hill community. And I think it speaks volumes that there's nobody from Stone Hill here opposing it. That property is going to be used for some commercial. I think this is probably the least invasive that it, that it could be. It's basically an amenity for the citizens of Stone Hill. As to the comments that preceded me, I just want to make note that this entity is extremely aware of the concerns regarding growth and infrastructure. And it, it lays in the back of our minds on every decision that's made. We should, I would recommend that we recommend to the trustees to approve this project.
Thank you. I, I want to make a comment on behalf of this, is that when Mr. Armhi was explaining to you the process for this particular case, this is one that the PUD had already been approved. And so it's gone through the processes and you're seeing what happens when there's a site plan that comes before us. And I, I, I think that, that we've been presented with everything that is required to be presented. And I think that it's, you know, reasonable for us to make that decision. Yes.
It may be worth noting, too, that the, the designation of what gets built where, township-wide, is established by a public process. And townships are almost required. Certainly strongly encouraged by the state to revise, to establish and revise township land use plans for the entire township at, at an interval of every ten years, with revisions made along the way. This use of this part of Beaver Creek Township was established through a public process like this some twenty years ago. My point in bringing this up is that this kind of planning, A, it takes time, and B, it's ongoing. Guess what? We're considering another iteration of a township-wide land use plan right now. It's been developed by consultants over the last year plus, almost two years, and is before the zoning commission as we speak. And the zoning commission has some issues with that plan. Well, we want your voices throughout the planning process, too, not just when it has an impact on your backyard. The planning takes place long before the building plans are submitted for approval. It's often the case that it's too late to object to a building plan at this point in the process. This, I'm speaking to citizen planners. These folks are volunteers. None of them are professional planners or zoning administrators from here or anywhere else. They volunteer their time to hear these cases. The Board of Zoning Appeals hears cases that have to do with individual property owners who maybe want to do something different on their property than the zoning code allows for. I'll, I'll say it to sum up, get involved. These, these plans are derived from many years ago. And here we're seeing the results of some of that planning that are coming to fruition tonight and moving forward. So thank you for, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I always want to recruit, recruit new energy into these processes because we can't do it without that energy. It's illegal for us to do it without that energy. So jump on in. Thanks.
Thank you. And I want to follow up and say to you that, yes, we are volunteers. We love when this room is full, not when it's empty. And again, when it's not in your backyard, but it's everyday decision-making is very helpful. The land use plan that he has said, referred to, this commission has denied or recommended that the trustees not accept it on two occasions. So we are here to hear you and to make recommendations to the trustees based on what it is that you tell us. So you are welcome. We do have a semi-motion on the table? Is that...
It started.
It, did, did you start it?
I did start it.
Did you finish it? Okay.
I'm back at it.
Back at it.
All right. So I recommend, well, I make a motion to recommend approval of case eight thirty-nine as submitted.
Second motion.
Okay. I think we have discussion? Click that for, did I?
Yeah.
Did it out of order?
You did it.
I did it out. So any discussion? Okay. All right.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Yes. Moving along. It's a continuation case, number eight thirty-seven. I'll ask that the staff please provide a brief overview of it.
How many of you were here a month ago for the first meeting on this particular property? Okay. Not the majority. Okay, great. The property in question here located along Alpha Bel Brook Road, adjacent to the Russ Research Center, is a total of thirty-six acres that are currently zoned to two different zoning districts, based on the historical period that went before Russ and before Ohio University acquired the Russ Research Center. After six years of working with Ohio University and the planning for the future of the Russ Research Center, here comes a pandemic, here comes changes at Ohio University, and they decide to bow out of this process. And to sell the properties that they've acquired to the west of their research park, you can see the five parcels that constitute the research park right now. And then the property to the north and west of there, the wooded area, is what we're talking about tonight. We are not talking about the very corner property, which has been designated, the entire property in the land use plan is anticipated as mixed-use development. It was originally called out as residential development and was revised to allow for some of the planning by Ohio University for having uses other than residential in this property. That's in the land use plan. The land use plan is not a binding legal document, but it is a legal document that often reinforces zoning and explains where some of the land, anticipated land use comes from. So the, the property on the corner, there will be significant reworking of that intersection. It's an awful intersection. And with the fact that the school district has acquired the property across the street, what we're anticipating happening here is frankly not going to work with the current traffic patterns. So I, I, I don't care to say what all the things are that people have talked about there, but that triangle from the water tower up to Alpha and around the corner to Indian Ripple is not part of this discussion tonight. The thirty-six acres to the north of it are currently... The 36 acres to the north of it are currently, until very recently, there was two parcels. One of them was zoned agricultural and the other was zoned office?
CPUD.
I'm sorry?
CPUD.
Oh, commercial PUD. And so now it's all one property, but combining the properties, erasing the property line does not change the zoning of either segment of the property. So that has to be done by a different process, and that's what we're here for tonight. The new owner of both of these properties, Ober Development Company, is represented here tonight, and they have requested a rezoning to a residential PUD. Our PUD is something that Beaver Creek Township is very familiar with, starting with Stonehill Village back in the 19, late 1980s. And Beaver Creek Township currently features 39 PUDs, including 11 that are not residential. So we're familiar with PUD and Planned Unit Development is a zoning designation that allows the suspension of the hard fast zoning rules like minimum setbacks and densities and all the rest of it, and puts everything up for negotiation. Okay? It gives the township the opportunity to make demands on developers like open space, recreational facilities, drainage enhancements, sidewalk curbs, roadway stuff, so that we can limit the costs of these developments as we move forward. Residential development is arguably the most expensive kind of development that a township like Beaver Creek can undertake. It results in significant tax revenue, and early on, that's a net financial gain to the township. But once the infrastructure starts wearing, then we're looking at a different picture. So we want to take the opportunity to make demands on the developers. And by the same token, the demands, the developers can request some consideration from the township. And so none of that is happening here tonight. All that we're considering now is, is this property appropriate for the proposed use residential PUD, period. We're not talking about density. We're not talking about roadways. We're not talking about water systems. We know that those discussions are coming, but you just heard a process, a meeting that featured the kind of discussions that we're going to have when we get that engineering and have a chance to review it. When we talk to the county commissioners and the county engineer and the health department and everybody who has any authority over what goes in the ground in Beaver Creek Township, will be given an opportunity to weigh in on the configuration of the infrastructure, the actual design of the land, if and ever one is submitted, if one is ever submitted. And that brings up an interesting point. The fact that we rezoned this property, whether we do or not, the fact of its rezoning does not obligate anybody to develop the land according to any plan. It might stay the way it is forever. I don't know. I doubt it. But given the current pace of development in this township, I doubt that it's going to stay that way. But the Ober Development Company owns the property, and they'd like it to be zoned for residential purposes of residential PUD.
Can I ask a process question? Can I ask a process question? I don't want to interrupt.
I don't mind.
During the application phase, why is a plan submitted with that request to rezone?
I don't know. It's not required. Simply put, it's not a requirement at this point in the process. So we do understand that the developer does plan a residential subdivision here and that on the 36 acres will be approximately 100 parcels, but we don't know. We have some pictures of that, but we don't, nothing formal has been proposed to anybody, to the township, to us, or whatever. That's the next step in this process. So after the zoning commission makes a recommendation to the trustees, we have 10 days to get that recommendation to the trustees. That'll happen next Monday, whatever the recommendation is. And they can recommend approval as submitted, approval with conditions that they specify, or denial. They can recommend whatever they want. The trustees then have 20 days to set, or excuse me, 30 days to hold their own public hearing, another hearing like this, at which they'll make a final decision on whether to rezone the property. Rezoning is a legislative process. It involves changing the law. The law says these properties are commercial PUD and agriculture. We want the law to say something different now. And that's why this process, which is specified by the state, is seeming, it seems tedious. I get that. But it's there, A, to give residents a voice on multiple occasions before multiple bodies, and to make sure that everything's done according to established rules and laws with regard to other agencies that have authority over what happens here. They could include the National Park Service. They could include the Corps of Engineers. It could include the EPA. It could include any number of different agencies. And so we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. And I want to be clear that tonight, we're talking about rezoning the property. The trustees will talk about that over the next month, about whether they agree with whatever recommendation this body makes. And then if the property gets rezoned, then we'll be considering at some point, presumably, a site plan for approval, just like we just did for the storage lockers. Does that make sense to people here?
Again, I'm not going to step on public questions.
It's okay.
Because this came up last time. The way I was interpreted, this is our chance as public to respond to the application.
One of them, yes.
So if it's on the application, we have the right to address it tonight?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny that, but it's not my, it's not my meeting. I'm staff. I'm not, I'm not a member of the zoning commission here. It's up to them whether they want to hear.
And that's okay.
I'm not saying you can't speak on other matters. I'm just saying the decision that we're cruising towards tonight has to do with the zoning of this property, period.
Thank you for the summary. I have a question, too, and thank you for helping us with process because he's a wealth of information and he has a lot of experience, so we do lean on him for that. I have a question to general counsel. Since we, this is a continuation meeting, and the majority of the people that were in the room did not raise their hand that they were here last time, they're new people. My question is, and we've given time to staff to give the summary, should we also listen to see if the applicant has anything that they want to comment on?
I think that so people that weren't here before didn't have the opportunity to hear from the applicant, that it makes sense to allow him to be able to speak as well.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Ober? You know the drill.
Good evening. My name is George Ober with the Ober Land Developers. I'll try to make this brief because I think everybody's familiar with where the site is at this point. Just a little bit of history. Ober Development Company has been around for 75 years. We're a fourth generation company. We've done a lot of development in the township, including Autumn Creek, Fawn Ridge, Spring Ridge, Spring Meadows, Nathaniel's Grove, Wagner Trace, Hickory Ridge, and Walden. And I know a couple of those are technically in the city of Beaver Creek, but that's still in the township, so. It's already been mentioned that the site is approximately 37 acres. The eventual plan will include about almost 10% of open space, and as it's been stated, looking to build about 100 lots on the 37 acres. We've already explored both with county engineer, township, access to utilities, watershed, drainage issues. And we'll be prepared to meet all of the typical subdivision regulations and the Ohio Revised Code. So we think the proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. It's consistent with the prospective 2040, which the township participated in, as did we. It's within the urban service boundaries. It's actually compatible with the consistent, inconsistent with the surrounding land uses. We recently, on the property directly across the street on the other side of Alpha Bellbrook Road, we actually zoned that 50 acres in the township, or I'm sorry, in the city of Beaver Creek in September. It was finally approved. And that also was zoned for a residential PUD at a density of 2.5 units to the acre. And again, that was, I believe, effective September the 25th. We didn't discuss it at the last month's meeting, but I did want to mention, there was a lot of comments and questions about price point. And we did a little bit of research in the development, or the subdivision to the immediate east of this has been developed for some time. We looked at transactions over the last 12 months. And over the last 12 months, the transactions that have closed in there, you know, they varied from, you know, as low as $405,000 and one up to $745,000. But I think the point I wanted to make was that the median price of the transactions in the last 12 months was a little over $519,000 per home. The development that's on the other side of Alpha Bell Road, and I guess would be considered the Terra Estates or Terra Falls, thank you, there are actually quite a number of transactions in there. There was 28 transactions with the median price at $410,000. The product that we would anticipate in the proposed rezoning is the same product that we're currently building in Washington Township in a development called Washington Trace. We developed two different products in that area. One is more of a patio home, smaller lot product. The other one is, and I'm not suggesting that's what we're doing, I'm just saying that the product in there for the single family homes is consistent with what we plan in this development. And the average price in there today is $591,000. So I don't, the point I wanted to make there is even with the density that's being proposed, construction costs and development costs of the last three years have gone from, I mean, what the retail lot sells for on a front footage basis, three years ago was about $1,000 a front foot. Translation, $100,000 for a 100-foot lot. Today, three years later, post-COVID, post, all the other stuff is about $1,400 a front foot. So considerable increase in construction and development costs. And yeah, some of those have gone down a little bit over the last year or so, but for every one that went down, two of them went up. So I think the, we have done all of the environmental studies and there are no environmental issues on this. We are aware of some of the drainage issues, and we have a plan to prevent us from allowing any water to go, any additional water to go downhill than what is already going downhill. I think in closing, I just want to say that we're requesting for your approval this evening for the proposed PUD. However, we also are respectfully requesting that this not be tabled again, that we really would appreciate a decision one way or another tonight. So whatever that might be. Thank you.
I just have one question for you.
Sure.
When did Ober Development purchase this property?
I'm going to say six or eight months ago.
Okay.
Don't remember the exact date.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, in 2023.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Ober, you spoke to the fact that environmental studies have been done. What do those entail?
Phase one entails an environmental engineer to walk the site, to survey the site, to do historical research on the site, to look for any contaminations. They look for barrels or, you know, waste that they might see on the surface of the site. Typically, they do the phase one, and if there's any evidence that there's anything that needs further explored, then they go into a phase two where they actually would dig holes. In addition to that, we've done soils borings on the site.
Okay.
So we've done soils borings over the entire 37 acres and to check for bearing capacities, subsurface conditions, and things of that nature. Found nothing unusual.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, any other questions? I have none. Anybody? Do you have any? Here's the fun part, y'all. We have to have a little bit of order to this. When you came in, those of you who wanted to speak signed this piece of paper. And so that we can, I'll go down this list of that you all signed up for. I'll go down through this, but I still want to do it in those that are for, those that are against, and those that are neutral. And I'm going to put a time limit today because we did have one meeting that was open where we had quite a bit of discussion. This time, looking at the time, it's 7:15. There were 14 people who signed up to speak. So if it was five, if I give you all five minutes, that'll give us an hour and 10 minutes, I believe, if I did my math right. And anybody can check my math, and it's not usually right. It's about right. Okay, so does that sound fair? Like, just, okay, we can all live with that? Okay. Oh, well, I will tell you this, that at the very end, after I'm finished, I have a little sticky that says, "Make sure to ask anybody else who wants to speak that they can." So we're going to, we're just rounding to about an hour and 10 minutes total. So if you're trying to figure out if you've got kids to bed and all that kind of stuff. Then the other thing that I wanted to make certain that we talked about was with this is that we look for themes. So if there's something that's already been said, just be brief about it. It's not that we don't want to hear about it again. We don't want you to speak. We want you to speak. We want you to be involved, but try to keep those replicated comments or themes brief. That helps us digest the information a little bit more. The other thing is, a lot of times people will come up and say, "Well, you know, I'm going to defer, and if I could have my five minutes to my spouse, and they're going to talk for 10 minutes." So we don't want to be doing that. We're not trading. This isn't Congress. We're not doing that. Okay? Anything else that you can think of that I might want to say? Anything else that you can think of that I might want to say? And at the very end, anybody who spoke last time that still has something that they want to say will listen to you at the very end as well. Does that sound fair? With new information they're asking, but repetition is an effective strategy for all of us to learn. Okay. All right. So at this time, I would like to continue the open session of the meeting, and I would like to listen to anyone who is for the applicant. What we do is we come up, you say your name and your address, and we have to do that kind of slow because Brandy is taking the minute so that we get everybody's name down. So is there anybody here who is for the applicant that wanted to speak on behalf? Okay. Now we'll listen to those who are against the applicant, and I'll begin, if you don't mind, and I'll probably butch some names, but I see a Ken Chai from fifty-three James
Hi, I'm Ken Chai.
Chai.
The J is silent, thank you very much. I was not here for the first meeting, so I apologize for that, and this is the first time I've been to a township meeting of any kind. I just want to say I'm against the changing of the zoning for this development. I live on James River Road there. There's a history with me and some of my neighbors with water mitigation issues and things like that when that area of Arlington was developed, that over time had to be dealt with and other strategies put in place. And so when I hear about development coming here, and our famous clay soil and things like this, and hydrostatic pressure pop to mind, I start to worry about water mitigation and taking everything into account that was said. I would hope that, obviously, it's top of mind for all of you as well, that if we were to do any kind of development here, it would be with restrictions around water mitigation to make sure that there isn't an issue for existing homes. I'm also concerned about traffic. That's a lot of houses on both sides of Alpha Bellbrook. Talked about traffic patterns and the whole intersection. I totally agree, it's a terrible intersection. But I look at that and the proposals that I've heard and talked about of opening up access through into Arlington, I'm against that as a flow of vehicles flowing through. I think of the safety issues there. We have a lot of young families, people outside in their yards playing, things like that, that I love seeing and being able to wave to my neighbors, and I hate the thought of additional cars, however many, flowing through to get to Factory. I also worry about noise, and we have a great area there of trees that helps deaden sound for a lot of us. I would hope that some sort of restrictions could be placed that if this does get passed, which again, I don't want it to, but if it were to get passed, that there would be a heavy restriction of screening for noise reduction between the neighborhoods over time, because as you say, things will grow and change and whatnot, but keeping that there to continue to mature would be crucial in my mind. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Amanda Taylor?
I spoke last time, so I'm willing to defer to the end.
Thank you.
The counterparts here that have been discussed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mike Milner. I live on Williamsburg Court. Based on current township land use plan under Mission Sustainability, it specifically states, "We must be proactive in anticipating the tensions placed on our infrastructure, schools, housing stock, police, and fire protection, natural resources. The current rezoning application is far too premature to state, county, city, and/or township studies that must be conducted to analyze the infrastructure congestion, schools, and environmental impacts associated with the overdevelopment of housing on North Alpha Bellbrook, the lack of rolled shoulders, turn lanes, traffic signals, and the potential impact of a new school building further down south Alpha Bellbrook. And for those reasons, and for the fact that I already feel that our schools are way overcrowded, and we have kids in trailers already, at least two of the elementaries, I think this application should be denied, at least until further study and consideration." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Milner, can I clarify? You're at twenty-five fifty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm James Voisard. I'm joined here with my wife Trish and my son Patrick. We reside at two-five-nine-two Patrick Henry Drive in Arlington Place. Arlington Place Development is backed up to a line of black walnut trees at the farm for almost twenty years. There's an abundance of wildlife there that uses this as refuge within the township. Additionally, the tree farm provides a green space and a natural windbreak for the Arlington Place Development. Our home, two-five-nine-two Patrick Henry Drive, is at the end or at the bottom of the hill of Patrick Henry Drive. During bouts of heavy storm weather, we get a lot of water coming down that street, and my worry is that if that street is ever extended, that those problems are going to be exacerbated. In the wintertime, when they go to push the snow out at the end of that cul-de-sac, they always close off the drain, and the water's got nowhere to go. So that, too, is a very big concern of mine. If, I would say, if rezoning is gonna happen, then it should only happen with some approved restrictions or conditions to establish maybe a green space thirty-five feet or more between the old and new developments, which maintains the consistency of the township for the last twenty years, providing a natural weather, wind, and noise break between each development and the Russ Research Center, which is, it's a noisy place. It's industrial. There's a lot of activity that goes on over there. So a space like that could benefit both developments, okay? And the green space may be deeded possibly to residents of Arlington Place or offered to purchase by the owners adjacent on, I think it's James Trevor Road, or maybe establishing covenants governed by an HOA that no tree or bush removal is authorized on these back lots within that thirty-five-foot space, unless it was approved by the adjacent neighbors affected. So with that, thanks for listening and letting us voice our opposition.
Thank you. Could you staff please put this picture up so that we can see it?
Just a wider GIs.
Did you do that one?
Is it?
You'd rather have that one?
Yeah, that's fine there. It just gives me better reference.
Sure.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Take that one.
Good evening. Frank Varga, I'm at one-twenty-five James River Road. My wife and three kids have been residents for the township for about seventeen years, and obviously, we are affected by this. The first thing I kind of want to mention is that the applicant mentioned that the city recently rezoned the two-point-five over at Tacky Horse Farm, and I just want to remind the commission that this is a township meeting, and what the city does is the city's business. And Mr. Kretz also reminded us that it's not agreed upon unless it's been written down. And Mr. Ober applied for the rezoning, mentioning and even showing a demonstration of what he wanted the ceiling cap to be at two-point-seven units per acre. And so he has written that down and established that as record, and so I think the commission needs to evaluate that application in its entirety with the associated volunteered information that he provided, and whether it's best for the township. I just wanted to add that from the meeting. Before I start over comments, I do want to thank the zoning commission for hearing everybody today. I do understand you're a volunteer workforce. We are your neighbors, and so we're just glad to let you hear us out and hopefully choose to serve our interest and the best interests of the township. I also understand that the commission is possibly fears litigation. I know there's been some history over the twenty years, ten years, twenty-five of litigation on what developers have done to litigate with Beaver Creek Township, and so there's always a fear there of what happens. I would really like to remind you, though, that as of 2022, the Southern, the United States District Court of Southern Ohio, which was also backed up by the U.S. District Court, Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, ruled in favor of Sugar Creek Township, right here in Green County, against a land developer. It just happened to be, sorry about that, that's my son asking for pickup. It just happened to be against Ober. And so I'd like to just, while I have time, to talk about that. The, it's a similar situation where it was asked for a rezoning. The district court ruled in favor of the township's decision and their processes on both the Fourteenth and the Fifth Amendment. In that case, the zoning commission denied the rezoning application to RUPUD. The trustees also denied that application, and Ober decided to take suit for violation of constitutional rights under the Fourteenth Amendment, specifically Equal Protections Clause, and also the Takings Clause of the Fifth Amendment. Both the district court, under summary judgment, and the Court of Appeals in 2022, ruled that there was no violation of equal protection under the Fourteenth Amendment because Ober was not treated differently than any other individual before the zoning commission or the trustees. The township had actually previously approved rezoning actions, so there was no ill will. There was no action that that commission or trustees took to single out Ober at the time. And so that, the courts found that there was no violation of equal protection. He was given the same due process than anyone else would in that case. The second thing that Mr. Ober attempted to sue the township for in federal court was the violation of the Takings Clause under the Fifth Amendment, which the courts ruled there was no taking or loss of economic viability of the property, because under the current zoning, the property still had its existing value associated with the way it was zoned agricultural, meaning Mr. Ober paid a sum of money for the property, the value of that property remains under current zoning and still had value. The courts and the Taking Clause does not guarantee any right of return for any private property developer, nor does it establish any regulatory taking when a property might be used for development in the future. Essentially, what the courts have decided is that the zoning commission and the trustees were doing their process of what's in the best interests of the township based upon the land use plan, and they were, and the courts backed them up. So in comparison to what had may have happened ten, fifteen, or twenty years ago, I want to remind the commission that you have case law and legal precedence to do your duty as our fellow neighbors. And so I ask you to do that. I'm one-hundred percent against the rezoning of this property until such time that infrastructure is ready to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robert. I can't read your writing. At twenty-six, three-four, Thomas Jefferson Drive. I don't know.
It's a tough act to follow. Hi, I'm Robert Bressley, two-six-three-four, Thomas Jefferson Drive. I'll just add a few more details or color to some of the things that have been previously said. The first gentleman talked about noise from this potential development, and that's something that I'm definitely concerned about since the development of Sky Crossing, it's about a half mile north of us, it's in the city, but there was a lot of removal of trees as a result of that, and we're getting a lot of increased noise in our neighborhood, so I'm right at the top of Thomas Jefferson Drive, and that's something that's concerned us quite a bit. But the other thing that happens when you take away those trees is wind becomes an issue. And actually, in Arlington Place right now, wind, you know, on windy days, we have trash, we have furniture, we have stuff blowing down the street. Wind is already a huge issue, and that's something that we're really concerned with about this potential new development. And I'll just remind you that Chapter Three of the Township Land Use Plan, it does advise the commission to consider, among other things, things like natural barriers, the topography, and also it states that land use along the Route Thirty-five corridor needs to be subject to noise mitigation considerations. So for these reasons, I believe that this application for rezoning should be rejected until those wind and noise mitigation considerations are in place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark Scousen, one-one-five, James River. I just, it wasn't part of my remarks, but he mentioned wind, and I hadn't thought of that before, but it is kind of at the top of a hill, and there is a lot of wind, trees blow over, trampolines go down the road and whatnot, and that is a barrier that, if it's taken away, would harm from that way. Just wanted to talk a few minutes about the timing, and this is not the right timing for rezoning. I had some charts, I emailed them, I think I emailed them too late, maybe, they didn't get there. Anyway, there are one, two, three, four, five developments or areas that are under development with housing or that will be, that just got, the one across on the Tacky Horse is like number five, that all either use Alpha Bellbrook, Indian Ripple, or Factory right around there. So that is just tons of new cars, and this would be another couple hundred, you know, if a hundred houses, that's at least a couple hundred cars extra that would be going through there. And we've already stated, I'll just, just to kind of, we talked about the four-way stop there that is bad, that they already talked about and said that they need to fix. I don't know if someone talked about Factory Road keeps flooding still, that's not solved. The thirty-five, Factory Thirty-five, Factory Thirty-five interchange, the so-called super street, you know, we had plans to make the overpass, that didn't happen right, and so now we have the problem, and that of the super street is apparently the best we can do for now. And that's already causing backup, and if we have, when all of these other five get fully developed, that'll be a lot more traffic on those three streets, and those streets are narrow, two lanes, they don't have shoulders, they have very, very deep goalies, or whatever you call them, ditches along the side. Some of that is to try to help Factory Road keep from flooding, but whatever the case, it's just too much traffic with what's already planned for development. So I am saying that we should delay any more residential until after these are built out and we have a good understanding of what needs to be fixed before we put more houses in there. Then, point number two was just that the proposal that we saw, so I, so basically, we should deny the, deny the rezoning for now until we can figure out what's going on with the roads. That's my point number one. But, but what was been proposed is also out of sync with our plan and our community style and our aesthetics that we all want and are here for. Somebody mentioned that, hey, we are living on land that was displaced trees already, and so now we're trying to deny somebody else the opportunity to live on a lot that didn't have trees. Or that maybe, once we got into the coveted Beaver Creek Township, now we're trying to close the doors and not let anybody else get in the coveted, but that's not what we're trying to do. This is about shaping the community. That's why we even have this panel, is we're for growth, but we want the growth shaped in the way that is the style and the aesthetics that we're looking for. So we're trying to grow our community to be the style that we were hoping for, so that it's a great place that we moved into. And the proposed rezone plan that we saw is not that. The township plan talks about upscale rural character and atmosphere, greenways, strong sense of community, preserved environmental resources, countryside rural home style, site lifestyle, managed growth, non-congested traffic, safe and sustainable. And the best way to achieve this is patient, measured growth with larger lot size and more spaces between the houses. And that is not a hundred and thirty-seven acres. It is a lot less than that. Otherwise, in just a few years, our community will be like those that we steered away from when we were looking for a place to live. So we all had a bunch of places we could have lived in, in the Dayton area, could have been Riverside, could have been Huber Heights. We decided not to live in those places with close houses and small lots, and we came here, and that's the type of community that we're looking to keep. So I just said, when the timing's right, what would the land use, the appropriate land use aligned proposal look like? Well, it would have lots with maybe about an acre with a minimum of point-seven-five acres. It would have green space, not just along the road, it would have it between, between the park with the Russ Research all the way around. It would have a bigger, he proposes a holding pond down at the north, I guess northeast portion. It would be bigger than that. I think the idea that we have correctly decided how much water, you know, when we built Arlington Place, we thought how much water might run, and we built the plan, and that is not.
Time.
All right. Thank you.
Terry, that was you, right? Okay. Megan?
I spoke last time. I'll defer to the end.
Thank you. Mary Lou Hopper? Terry Dixon?
I can make my briefs so other people can talk. All I wanted to say was, so every morning when I go to work, I, all I wanted to say was, so every morning when I go to work, because I, I live on Patrick Henry, so at the corner of Patrick Henry and James River Road is a bus stop for kids there, so there's kids waiting there every morning. And, and then at the corner of James River Road and Colonial Parkway, they also wait for the bus there, too. If we have Patrick Henry going all the way through, it not only gives a throughway from people like Alpha Belloc Road and possibly Indian Ripple that are going to go through Patrick Henry and then go to Colonial Parkway in order to get to Factory Road, somebody, some kid's going to get clipped. It's, it's not, it's not a safe situation. There are kids there every morning, and they get dropped off there. It's not a good idea to have that a throughway where there's an excess of traffic for safety. So I cannot see how just building all sorts of hundreds of homes is more important than the safety of our children.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon, and you're at twenty-six-thirty, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anne?
Hi, I'm Anne Dixon, at twenty-six-thirty Patrick Henry Drive. Um, excuse me a little second. I have to get my glasses. Here we go. If Mr. Ober is a proud Beaver Creek resident, as we all are, and considered a leading benefactor of this great community, perhaps he can repropose a plan of development on this land with a density similar to the level that he enjoys himself in Fox Run Estates of Beaver Creek. That housing density is approximately point seven units per acre, which is one-third of the level proposed in this application. That light level of density would be fitting for such a beautifully treat property and would result in lower traffic and congestion. I also wanted to say for all of us here in Arlington Place, I think we can speak for all of us, we really value the character of our neighborhood. It's secluded, it's quiet, it's peaceful, it's safe. The only people in traffic coming into Arlington Place are residents and Arlington Place residents and, and guests of Arlington Place, or delivery people for Arlington Place, landscaping people for Arlington Place. It's not a cut through for anything, it's just Arlington Place people driving through there. Allowing Mr. Ober's plan to be approved as is with taking down all the trees and extending Patrick Henry Drive to connect the two neighborhoods will forever change the special character of our neighborhood. And because a picture is worth a thousand words, I would like, am I able to hand this? I have kind of a before and after picture here.
How many do you have? Thank you. Sydney Berger from Stutzman Road?
Hi, I'm Sydney Berger, three-three-zero-zero, Stutzman Road. There's a few things I'd like to mention, so one of the things, of course, is I've heard talk about a pond being there. I know near where I live with my family, there was a pond nearby that was built and some trees that were down, and one of the big issues that happened were mosquitoes. We get triple, I'd say, as many mosquitoes as we used to before that was built, so I can see that being quite an issue for the community. On top of that, I know environmental studies were mentioned, and so I would like to mention as well a few other environmental cities or environmental studies that talk about residential properties. So residential energy is roughly twenty percent of U.S. greenhouse gases, and of course, from a study in 2019, if we look at the carbon emissions of roads, it's specifically called Carbon Footprint Estimation in Road Construction. For each one-point-five miles of asphalt road, six thousand seven-hundred-thirty tons of CO2 is admitted. For each one-point-five miles of concrete, for example, with sidewalks, three thousand eight-hundred-seventy-two tons of CO2 are admitted. Of course, as we reduce the amount of trees, we reduce the amount of plants that will take that CO2 out of our environment, and especially as maybe one of the youngest people here, I think about the air pollution and how that will affect me and some of my younger friends here as we continue to grow and live in Beaver Creek. I know especially as someone who is an avid outdoor runner, I really appreciate the green space, and I think also taking down that green space and taking down the trees will limit the walkability of our communities as well. It's already hard enough to get around on foot here, it's mostly traffic, and so increasing any way there is possible to have spaces to walk through this neighborhood or even just spaces where we can walk in the woods would be really nice. Thank you for your time.
Do you know the current walkability score of your area?
Not super well, but it is quite low.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nate Metzger?
How are you guys? As others have said, I really appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity, we as Arlington Place residents, to speak on our community's behalf, so.
Nate, your address, please.
Sorry, yes, I'm at one-six-one James River Road. The rezoning application that Ober has submitted makes an argument that we, as the residents of Arlington Place, request or would like to have direct access to Alpha Belloc Road, and, and that's just simply not the case. And I speak on behalf of, you know, our, our community residents as a whole. The existing, our existing Arlington Place development is near completion, and it enjoys, as has been stated, so I don't want to be redundant, but enjoys walking, running community without disruption or cutoff. And the connection of the new development, we just, we think that the through traffic is, is not something that should be considered. Again, as was stated, I'm fully against it, I think we all are, but if in fact it does get pushed through, it should be with some major restrictions that we're all seeking. And obviously, the roadways being, as, as safety was mentioned, hugely, hugely important, and, and we hope would be considered. Our residents also, you know, with the connectivity as proposed, the through, the through traffic, and, and I mentioned the safety, but we feel that the application should be denied, but if it is granted, that it be with limitations, as I stated, sorry to be redundant. But we appreciate you taking the time, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Taylor?
Amanda Taylor, thirty-nine George Wythe Way. So environmental studies, I did hit on this last time, but the studies that are being performed are only inclusive to the plot that's being discussed. Doesn't show the actual impact of the environment that's impacted around where he's trying to have this rezoned. So there is a much greater infrastructure problem that could happen. We talked about the roadways, utilities, and I know that stuff is done and accounted for at the Green County level, but again, I think that has to be taken into account what's happening. We live very close to the water treatment plant on a routine basis. Our neighborhood gets very, very, very high chlorine levels. Has to do with utility flushing the amount of water that's getting forced through. You add more houses into the area, that's more of a draw, more of a pull. We need to know if the utilities are going to be able to sustain that, and I know, again, that's not outside of this purview, but should be considered when you rezone. If you look into the Township Land Use Plan, it's a twenty-year plan. I know it's currently trying to be rewritten, but as it states, we should be looking at the infrastructure impact that is called out in our land use plan. Please, 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 take a look at the density that's being proposed, because that is outside the goal of what our land use plan established. I don't want to jump ahead, but our neighborhood went ahead and conducted a survey, not just of our neighborhood, but of those folks that live around our neighborhood. I have the survey metrics for you guys. I want to call out and say thank you to the neighbors, this, this is not my product. We had a couple of benefactors in our neighborhood.
If you could get Mr. Hill one also.
Put this together. It really, really impacts us as a community. I don't know if you can see it, we told you guys, everybody cared, we care. We like to keep our community intact. We like the quiet, we like the nature. We don't want two hundred extra cars driving through our neighborhood. It's a empty seat in our neighborhood. We all know who lives in our neighborhood. I watch, I mean, I walk my dogs at four AM and eleven PM. I know, I know a car that doesn't belong in my neighborhood. Please, 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 do not attach our housing community to a housing community that's going to potentially cause unsafe acts to occur in our neighborhood. If you guys are going to potentially rezone, please rezone with restrictions. I don't want to jump ahead, but we actually have some proposed restrictions.
Please share.
Who has them, is a map included in that?
On the back.
The last page has a map of what we have proposed. We, it was called out that you needed two exits and entrances to this community, we gave them to you. We gave a buffer to help with the noise, the wind. So hopefully, please take a look. If you're going to rezone, please rezone with restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the end of the list for those who had signed up.
Yeah, Megan.
Okay, hold on. Oh, you were on this list as well, please. I'm sorry, what is your name?
Megan Hart.
Megan Hart from seventy-eight James River Road.
Yeah, my name is Megan Hart, I'm at seventy-eight James River Road. I did speak last time, and I'm not going to belabor those points. I did come up with some new things, I did want to thank you. Not here, but gave me some food for thought, things to research and look into. I didn't know this process, I didn't know how any of this worked, so this is all giving me education on how to be involved as part of my community. I've been moving around for twenty-one plus years in the Air Force, we finally settled. It's nice to know how to have a voice. But one of the big things I had not had a chance to look at prior to the last meeting was the land use plan, and that is heavily referenced. It's referenced in the application, it's referenced in the recommendation for approval that was originally on the agenda for last month's meeting. Now that I've read it, I don't get it. There seem to be some very distinctive disconnects between what's actually in the land use plan and what is being proposed, specifically that water. Water comes up as a big concern. Flooding is still a big concern in the area, we're all concerned about that. I might actually be dealing with some potential basement issues because of some water things right now. So I went and looked at it, and the current Township Land Use Plan under Chapter Three on Residential Land Use Requirements, it actually says that residential development should have a density of one-point-eight units per acre gross, and the zoning commission should strive for this density. It's in the land use plan, you guys use that as your guideline. One-point-eight is decidedly different than the two-point-seven units per acre, which is on their application. And this is gross density of one-point-eight acres, which is inclusive of all the land in the development, including roads and sidewalks. Massive disconnect. If you look overall, that one-point-eight number keeps on coming up throughout the land use plan. I was wondering what guidance the township looked at so we could maintain this township feel, so we don't start seeing, I liked what she said earlier on the other topic, the creep, the growth, that it's coming to get us, so we can maintain our feel that brought us all here to live here. That medallion is right there behind you, as highly emphasized the last minute, I really liked that point. We, the city can do what the city is doing. I know we can't bring that into consideration, although it is going to heavily impact where we're living because we all do have to travel through there, but based on our land use plan, based on what we've got, it seems to imply that we should just deny this application, and if not, heavily put those restrictions on here to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Okay, I saw his hand first and you next, it'd be okay?
Yeah, I must have signed the wrong list.
Okay.
There's a list going.
Was there another list?
It's fine. You can go ahead.
So I live in the Arlington Place, one-eighty George Wythe Way, my name is Charles Tweet. So when I bought this property in 2016, the reason I liked it was because of the wooded area, not with staying in the treatment plant, but there was, you know, you had reserves down the street, you have, you could walk within the community, you could feel safe. My concerns is that we're bringing in all this through traffic, and I have two young kids, eleven and twelve, we're bringing all this through traffic in, into that area. We don't have the infrastructure to support all these new developments. As it is now, I have a son over in Traybine, he's in a trailer. So that's another concern, so traffic patterns, not insufficient infrastructure, and then you're, you're changing the aesthetics of the whole area as well. Because already, we, across the, we, we're the research center, as I mean, in Ripley, you've been a big development up there, you know, no new road capacity to support that, plus you're bringing in this new development here, so I, I think this should be tabled until further studies on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you all the pictures or sort of illustrate the point that, you know, we have beautiful wildlife in our community. So that's kind of what you say, way of my discussion.
My name is Terry Palmer, forty-five James River Road. And this gentleman to my left, he knows me pretty well, and Ed and I have gone years back. In fact, he invited me to become a member of your board at one point, and I was too busy in my career to take on those responsibilities, but it's an awesome responsibility to have, and I'm very honored to have met him. He's been a big champion of a lot of things that we were trying to do in that, in Arlington Place. So I'd like to read something, and it'll probably recount a, a memory that he had that we both wanted to forget, but I'll start off this way. Circa 2018, 2019, I was in a protracted property dispute with a neighbor, and I stopped by to see Ed, and he said, impromptu, he said, you know, what do you think if the township grows and, you know, you guys don't have an HOA, and that community would grow? And I think you can see what that was going to happen. We welcome growth, but the right count of growth. And I always ask the question this way, and no disrespect to the gentleman who's eloquently got up and made his points, but would he want that type of density that he's proposing in his neighborhood? Okay? We enjoy a special community because, just like that picture there, it represents the beauty and sanctity of what we have. There's nothing like going home, hugging your kids, knowing that they're safe, knowing that you don't have to worry about, everybody in this neighborhood, we're, we're pretty tight-knit, we know each other, we look out for each other, and that's why we showed up tonight. I've been a resident of this community for twenty years. I am staunchly a- I am staunchly opposed to the acreage of rezoning partial to because I think it was actually farmland that was built on that we have. And I know there were legal fights for that, but we're taking away, we talk about green space and the sanctity of community. I've seen some development going on, and I know the gentleman talked about the property that was built on Indian Ripple. And that didn't necessarily turn out so nice for the community. But our community was aware of it. And we said, you know, if anything else happens, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna be on top of this. We assumed that Ohio University was going to develop that property and maintain it. It was going to be a research institute, and that's what we were told. So we had no reason to organize the way that we have because we had no idea that Ohio University was going to sell that property. But as soon as we found out what was going on, we did organize. And we do have legal counsel. Now, we don't choose to get in a protracted legal battle with anyone. But I've always been told, if you're serious about what you're doing, and you believe in your community and you believe in what you want, you fight for it. So we have retained legal counsel because we want the sanctity of the community to remain the way that it is. This is not a personal issue against the gentleman who wants to develop. He's a developer. I think the only way that our community will agree with what he's doing is he gives us the same density or more that we currently have. Because it's important. It's important to our way of life. We have a good way of life in that community. I can go to bed at night and leave my door unlocked, leave my garage door unlocked. I've, I've done it several times, and nothing ever came up missing. My neighbor leaves a package, or let's put it this way, UPS delivers a package to my house that belongs to the guy next door. I kindly take it over. We forge those relationships. You had another 100 houses, probably another 200 cars, because everyone has, you know, there's two cars. You never know these people. It took me 20 years to build these relationships, but it was totally worth it. I love my neighbors. They look out for me, and I look out for them. I see Fay walking her dogs every morning faithfully. We lose all that. We lose all that when you start trying to develop and add density, you know. We had hoped that Ohio University, I'm running out of time. But we had hoped that Ohio University would have kept that property in the sanctity of what it was because we want to preserve our way of life and the nature reserve that we have, the Narrows is beautiful. So I want you all to take a look at what we could potentially lose in wildlife by developing that property.
Thank you.
I respectfully thank you and for your attention.
Yes, ma'am. And she returns. Different case, though.
I don't live in Arlington Place, but I do live in the township.
Could you repeat your address just for the reference?
1372 Windsor Drive. The reason why I'm really here is, you know, I see the debt, that development right there, and it bothers me. And I want to address what he says about agricultural. And I'm looking for some property on, I don't even know what the road is. Spurling Lane. And I just, I love the Narrows. It, it, it is, it's beautiful. That's, that's what Beaver Creek is, and I think many of you mentioned that. And I, I think everything should be zoned agricultural. And when I started researching property in Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Township, probably about eight years ago, I've noticed how every time they come up with this zoning or like this review, they always go around and they zone all the farmland residential. And so it's, it's decades old. And so we don't know how it's going to play out. So how, how are you going to respond when it's a decade old or two decades old? But this, the property here will affect the Narrows and the property on Spurling Lane. And I know, just from walking on this property, how the water has just cut into it. We have these flash floods now. And you can see that on Traybine Road. Every time there's a rain, all the communities, they have the retaining walls or the retaining ponds, but the retaining ponds don't keep it there. They just move it downstream. And you can see that creek on Traybine that just overflows. It's flooding, and it just keeps moving down. And the Narrows, the last couple of years has been pretty dry, but we've seen it. We've seen it really big. And we've, I've seen just in, on that Spurling Lane, the, the amount of water force, the amount of pressure, and I don't know what kind of research you guys done, but I've walked it. And I walk it over and over again, every time I go to the Narrows, because I just love it so much. But there's going to be not only pressures there, there's going to be the school board pressures. Because, you know, as soon as that overr goes up, then it's got the school zoning there. And I'm sure, I'm sure Beaver Creek's going to put pressure on you for that and the lawfare of all that. But I just think that we should just have some more farmlands. When he was talking about what, I don't know what his name, sorry. Terry was talking about the, the farmlands, and that's what, that's what Beaver Creek is. It's, it's, it's farmlands, and we're not, there is no farmland, and it's all rezoned. Then I wanted, I wanted to, in order to, to maintain the property into, you know, park-like atmosphere, these properties have to be put into trusts. And that's a big pressure. And so this one property I'm looking for, it's in a trust. And because of the fear of developers coming in and swooping it up and putting housing on it or putting, you know, commercial. And there is even threats, even on some of the residuals with the, you know, you got the Huddleston homes across the street. And then down by, going over across the Narrows, I can see the future, the future where you guys are going to go approving homes. And I just want to think about, okay, your, Ober is going to go there instead of having, you know, agricultural. Then you got the school district, and then you're going to have to do the whole busing and then the whole water. And on Spurling Lane, it's going to be another issue because I'll be back. And I'll be talking about that. So I just, I just think that agricultural zoning is not bad. It's just, that's my opinion. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Heidi Gouda, and I live at 2642 Colonial Parkway. And behind our house on our property is a gully. And we asked the township for some help because when there are rain, when there's rain, extra heavy rain, it floods. And the township couldn't help us, so we and some of our neighbors laid rock down there. I am very concerned that if there were to be additional houses built there, all that rainwater, all that storm water would, would go downhill and flood the back of our property. So in addition to the other reasons that have already been articulated tonight for our house, I am also opposed to this zoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Signed the wrong form. My name is James Howley. I live at 270 Scarlet Drive. I'm actually in the city. But as people have said today, and I'll just sort of recap, what happens here is going to affect not just the township, it's also going to affect the city of Beaver Creek. And so that's why I wanted to come and just speak briefly. We love the character of both the township and the city, and that's why we moved here. We love the green space, and we're losing it. We're also, we also have to consider the impact to the wildlife that some people have talked about. And where, where does it go as the green space from Tacky Horse Farm is soon to be filled with additional housing? There will also be that impact of where is the wildlife going to go? We all love the Narrows, and we love to go down there. And I would just use as an example that there's a path in there, Vista Loop, that used to look out onto a beautiful prairie, and now it's under the back of houses. So I would ask that you consider disapproving this. And if not, that you would consider some, requiring some studies for environmental impact that go beyond whether there, whether there's an impact on the immediate property that's about to be developed more. Please consider more the land around. And I won't go into it again as to the impact on the roadways and the schools that people have already talked about. Thank you very much for your time, and I cede back the balance of my.
Is there anyone else?
Can I get two minutes?
Let me hear from others that haven't spoken yet, sir. Okay. Please.
The north right corner is mine and my neighbor's pond. Over an acre, 14 foot deep, over a million gallons of water. And the people live directly behind me. I think some of them are here tonight. I want to know when they put the retention ponds in, how they get control that watershed. That's all downhill. And there's a creek that runs through there. You see the dark spot in the north upper right corner. There's a pond that comes and goes out of that. And I've lived there for almost 40 years, and I've seen what it does, and the people live behind me. When Clemens developed Arlington Place, they had to raise the ground up almost 19 feet behind me because of that pond. There was a liability issue. What I'm concerned with, and I'm assuming the developers here, how is he going to control the watershed when you put 100 homes on 28 acres? And the watershed coming off of that has got to be phenomenal. Because the people do live behind me, and they know who I am. When that goes, there's a 100-year overflow, which overflows a lot. And when it comes down, because the township had to come in some years ago to reinforce with riprap to keep it from washing out, there's one culvert pipe that controls all that water that's under that development.
Big is that pipe?
I'm sorry?
How wide is that?
Not big, about that. Probably a 22, a 24-inch drain tile, which fills to the top when it drains, but it hasn't overflowed yet. There's a, there's a selfish part of me. There's a liability issue with that pond being there, okay? When Clemens wanted to develop it, the issue was if that pond breaches, oh, he said, that's a pre-existing condition. Oh, bull. That thing blows, and Clemens is in Miami. I'm going to get sued, and so is my neighbor. So how are you going to watershed? We're not going to disrupt that development. It would be wonderful if was. But I knew the Zinks quite well that owned the property. And when Nancy sold it, it was supposed to be a land lab. And somewhere along the line, the 100-year tree farm, tax, tax shelter went away. The sign went away that was in that driveway. But why don't we go with 25? It's not about money. Why try to stuff 100 homes on 28 acres? That's a, it's a condo. It's just a fancy, or patio home. You know? I mean, I know people live behind me are affected, but lease wise, there's grass around their house. You know, I mean, I, I think some lady, I couldn't hear really well out there. But I, when she did the math on 100 homes on 28 acres, what, what green grass was left? I can't imagine, 5%? So anyway, I'm concerned with liability on my selfish end with where I live and my neighbor lives, because that is an issue. And the people that live directly behind me can certainly appreciate the situation. Because believe me, if someone wants to see that flood, it does. It does quite often. But the culvert pipe has handled it so far. I don't think it can handle the watershed coming off of development there. I don't see how it can. And he can explain it to him. He knows hydroponics and hydraulics. It's a...
I'm listening.
No, I don't know what else to say. Because I just get stuck. As I made the joke the last time, I went to the Clemens meeting for the Arlington Place, and I wasn't thrilled about it. I knew it wasn't going to stop, and everybody's fine back there. It's not a problem. But lease wise, it's not condominiums. So if we go, you know.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, go ahead.
You're directly north of this development? Do you own like one-third of the pond, and your neighbor owns two-thirds of the pond?
I'm the two-thirder.
You're the two-third?
And that's the drain pipe.
Okay, that's why I was wondering.
I am the gatekeeper. I have the drain. If he makes me mad, if he makes me mad, I can take his pond away.
Well, that, that's why I thought you were immediately.
That's me with a big, larger section.
Right, okay.
Okay? And I'm just sincerely, you know, I've been around here since 1980, and I, and I'm, you know, I don't want to see it develop, but I didn't want to see a lot of things develop around me, especially down the street on North Alpha and Shaker Town, all that stuff. But you know, you can't do much about it to some extent. But why not 25 homes? Why not make it look like, you know? And then you could control the watershed. I don't know how they can do it.
And you had the fishery, is that right?
Yeah.
The fish?
And mute swans that I raise.
And what?
Mute swans that I raise. It keeps Canadian geese out of my yard. Since you can't shoot them, you gotta chase them off. So.
And is the fish, are you a hatchery, or I mean, do you sell the fish? Do you sell the fish, or do you, are they just for you?
Yeah, I'm R1A. I'm agriculture. I want to, wow, can I get a tactical agricultural exegesis real quick? Because I am grandfather. I can put 100 head of cattle on there, and I'll show you which way the wind blows. But anyway.
We're getting it. Is the pond your livelihood?
Sure. How's that?
Just asking.
I don't see most of these people in line. It's a soup line, the food banks. But yeah, that's my livelihood. No, it isn't. Of course not.
All right.
But my wife's an attorney with Green and Greens for 46 years, and I know liability. They were insurance litigators.
Hearing that loud and clear.
And sincerely, I'm up here on a selfish attitude, but not really. But 25 homes on that or 30 whatever, and make it look like something? You know, I don't even like Bellbrook, but look how they do build it. It's not 100 homes on 28 acres. I don't see how that's possible. But the liability I have on that pond is why, mainly why I'm here.
Your five minutes is up, but I want to check with the team here. Do any of you have any questions for him in particular? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Oh, wait.
Mostly because I need to follow what he said. So Rick Denry, 107 James River. To orient you on the map, I'm at the corner of Russ Research. Thank you for what you do. I've been a CHA president before, and I never once want to see a full room. Never going well when that happened. But, you know, big point, you're redoing the map right now. You know there's going to be schools in the next 30 years whenever this group and others approve that levy to build the thing. I've been through several homes to include around the country. Some with cut through, some where they dropped a million dollars to close the cut through afterwards. God help me when my FedEx package is, we're on the other side of that road that they closed. But the hydrology is a very important point. Russ Research sheds all of its water into three homes. I'm one of them. I am the least impacted. You can see on satellite where they had to put a rock stream through the back of my yard. The neighbor got to spend tens of thousands to move it to the street. So apologies for everyone else downstream from us on the street because it's coming from their yard, not, well, both of ours. So I don't think we've hit that enough, is how much water is going to come downhill. It probably will not directly affect me. I've already got the huge problem from the research center. And I'm pretty sure their roof drain goes into my yard. Different area, right? Thank you Clemens for all of those who love Clemens so much. So hydrology, big. I would love to see what the overall map is going to look like through the 10-year update that y'all are doing. I was torn between against it or neutral because I'm sure there'll be more development, but I can't make an intelligent decision. But I know that if you don't get that road fixed before you make any other plan, it gets a whole lot harder. Neighborhood I grew up in, it took them 15 years to cut through the center of a neighborhood to straighten out a street that was a huge problem as they negotiate those right of ways. Right now, you just have trees in the way of that road. But you know it has to move. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I saw a hand go up, and I had, we haven't heard from you, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
My name's William Good, and I live at 2595 Patrick Henry Drive. That's at the, next to James. It's, it's at the bottom of the drive. I get to shovel out my mailbox every time snowflowers come through. And I also see the, often see the water overflow. But somewhere of a technical point on the storm water and storm water drain, drainage, because most of the comments have addressed volumes. But it's not just the volumes. It's also the speed with which, with which the runoff comes. And anytime you replace... And anytime you replace something such as this, I'm going to call it forested land, with use that has quite a bit substantial impervious or semi-pervious surfaces, that greatly speeds up the runoff so that the water comes down in a big surge. And I would like that to be kept in mind as we're thinking about the drainage and the water situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on. You had meekly raised your hand and then I'm going to have Mr. Vargas speak again and then whoever's went up back there. Thank you. Yes, please, you.
Thank you all. I was going to wax poetic about traffic and just hazards and runoff and all that, but...
We need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Robbins, 220 North Alpha Belbrook. But my friends and neighbors here have covered pretty much all that. Look at that picture. Zoom, could you zoom out a little, please? All right. See all those houses? Then you see all those houses. And then there's that green strip to the left? That's also all houses that got approved already over in city. We're left with that one little green patch. It's not that big. How are you going to fit a hundred houses in that? Look at those little houses at the bottom. See those tiny little, that's the only way you're going to fit a hundred houses in that lot. That's disgusting. That's ugly. That's, I mean, I can't use the language to describe it. That can't be good. Okay, you were saying earlier, there's going to be like ten percent open spaces? Okay, that doesn't add up to very much. That's, what, the streets? I mean, you're not going to have anything else. It's just going to be houses, one after the other, that you can't even fit like a riding mower through, because they're about eight feet apart. My neighbor has a big riding mower. But we can't keep doing that. Where's the township? All I see is city. Just city here, city there, city there. Yeah, sure, it's called township, but when you're in those tiny little blocks of garbage houses there at the bottom, I mean, hell, just move back into the city. I mean, you'd have better amenities. Because we're destroying the only amenities we have for the township, which is nature. Just, look at that. Look at that little green square in the middle. And just mark it out, just get rid of it. I mean, it's only nature, it's only beauty, it's only our home. Slap in a couple hundred houses. Destroy our township. You know ours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vargas.
I can wait until the end.
There was only one other hand, but okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
What's your name?
My name is Esther Hu. I live on 621 Brookmead Court. Originally, I wasn't planning to come to the podium to speak, but after hearing what everyone else had to say, I just have to say that I am completely against this proposal because I simply do not foresee it having a positive impact on the local residential area and the community itself. I'm twenty-three years old, I've been living in Beaver Creek for twenty of those years and from what I have experienced here, part of what I loved about this community so much while growing up was the abundance of nature and there have been mentions from previous speakers about water drainage issues. I do not, I feel like those issues would simply be exacerbated by the establishment of a hundred new homes, because completely deforesting that area would also remove the existing tree roots that help absorb some of that water there as well. And in addition to that, the addition of more cars, more residents in a very congested area frankly, would only add to noise pollution as well as CO2 pollution, which you simply, none of us wants to breathe in any more of that, so. And as others have mentioned already, it would be more concerns for safety as well. And I ask that, yeah, that this proposal does not go through in order to preserve this beautiful community that I grew up in. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to be brief. I totally forgot something. I don't know if I hit my time. So, I wanted to kind of summarize the packet you had in front of you with the survey. So, just over the course of two weeks, we conducted the survey. And I do have all the raw data if the commission wants it, so we have names, addresses, and probably fifty percent of the phone numbers. And I can email that to you, so you know exactly who these people are on emails. But on those, I wanted to summarize, as of this meeting, we've got up to a hundred and twenty-four responses. Everybody is in agreement to decline the application and about ninety-two percent agree with most of the reasons that we had on the survey, which you've all heard today. Connection, one point eight acres, and really protecting the township and preparing the infrastructure. So, out of those a hundred and twenty-four, I do have all the data there. Eighty-one percent of those respondents are in the township. Nineteen percent are not in the township but are affected by the zoning. And so you've heard from some of those folks today, both in Green County and the city. So I just wanted to kind of summarize that for the minutes and the YouTube and anybody else who sees it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Feel like a barmaid. Last call.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
How closely are you guys looking at the rezoning within Beaver Creek City? How often are the two planned or looked at together?
I can't answer that. The zoning commission does not do that. That's something that staff does.
Okay.
So, I can defer that question to them.
Perfect. I mean, if you could, and I only ask because, so, we're building, of course...
Can you come up to the podium? Thank you.
Would you like me to restate my name?
No.
So you're building, we're putting houses again to the, was it, the west? But if you go a little bit farther north, they're looking at putting in a truck stop just north of our community as well, that the township, or not the township, the city's potentially approved on, again, farmland. So if we're talking about preservation, I think we need to have a joint committee or some communication between the city and the township. Because it's not just what's happening here, it's all over. It's Beaver Creek as a whole. I think multiple people have said, this is why I lived here, so...
So let me clarify something for you, because this is a hard, and it's not hard, it's just people don't always think about it this way. There is, the Beaver Creek Township, this is the incorporated and the unincorporated section. So it's all one township, but the city is the incorporated section.
Copy that, okay.
So, that is why that's a little bit difficult to grasp sometimes.
That's perfect.
Mm-hmm.
So, Megan mentioned, you know, coming home. I'm a New Yorker, that's where I grew up. I grew up in farm town, farm country, New York. I moved here, the Air Force brought me here. We left because the Air Force sent me away. My husband and I always said, we're coming back. We wanted to be here. And where we wanted to be was Beaver Creek. I can tell you, only being back two years, I don't want to kick myself in the rear end going, why did we even come back here? This is not the Beaver Creek we remember. And we were only gone six years. We're only gone six years. This is not the Beaver Creek that I remember. I went to purchase a house, lost it because the person buying my house died day before closing. But we fought, we fought so hard to find another house in Beaver Creek. We wanted to be here. And now I'm like, how do I get out of here? First of all, you're going to build all these track homes around us, destroying the beauty. You're going to put a gas station that can be an EPA nightmare just up the street from us. And I know it's not you guys, but I don't want to live in my neighborhood if this is what it's going to be. I don't want to pay taxes in Beaver Creek Township. I will go pay taxes somewhere else where I don't have this. And I don't know how I can guarantee that in the future for myself, but I will. And that's what you guys are doing to our community. And not just you guys, but that's what's happening. And I know we have to accommodate for growth and expansion, but how do we do that at an appropriate rate that's not going to make an EPA super fund at the end of our, end of our street, end of factory, because the gas tanks leaked and contaminated our groundwater, which is going to get to their pond? So, please, 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 is there any way we can start talking at a larger scale about some of this stuff and how it's going to impact your residents? Sorry.
No, thank you. All right. Okay, yes, sir.
So I've listened to everybody else, because I went first and it's been fabulous. And thank you again, and sorry to make it go longer, but it really hit me as a summary of everything that I've been hearing here tonight as a neighbor, is you have profit from a corporation in consideration on one side, how many homes cost, all those things are outlined versus neighborhood. We're not looking at this for profit. When they're done building, they'll move on and we're stuck with everything else behind. And that, I'd like that kind of a summary, that high-level thought, to be one of the top-of-mind things you guys take away from this tonight, is that everything you've heard here is from people who are your neighbors and we want to stay that way versus profit, which is fine, profit is good, but it has to be balanced. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting.
I recommend a recess too.
And I'm going to hear my colleague tell me that it's, we need a recess for at least ten minutes for potty, is that what we need? Ten-minute potty recess? We'll start back at eight thirty-eight.
Okay, should be good.
Okay, we're back in order now. I have a few things that we need to do, just in case I didn't do it.
Can I just advise one thing? We did get nine emails up until today and I think we got a couple more, they were just emails reflecting the same opposition.
That was one of the things, but before we do that, did I, I want to make sure that I did close the public portion of the meeting before we left?
You did right before we...
Yes, okay. So now I'd like to know if there are any documents that you received.
Yep, just nine emails up till, again, today. And I think we received a couple more today, but they just reflect the same comments that...
Nothing new, nothing different. So, for the record, those all will become part of the documents, including whatever was sent that hasn't been opened yet. There were some charts mentioned and that sort of thing, okay? And as we deliberate, we will be, or discuss, we will be doing that over a period of time. We have to conclude that within thirty minutes. Am I correct about that, or there is not a time limit on it?
There's not necessarily a time limit to conclude the deliberation.
Okay.
But...
All right. And Ed, is there anything else about process that we need to understand?
According to the zoning code?
Yes.
You have thirty days to deliver a decision to the trustees.
Thirty days.
They have, they have ten days to set a date for their meeting, their public hearing. They then have an additional twenty days to conduct the meeting and then within twenty days, they have to render a decision. So there are timelines at each step of the way that are legislated by the zoning code, most of them in ten-day multiples. I also have, for entry into the record, the survey that was alluded to by, I have the results, not just the survey. I have the printed results that are, that were referred to earlier.
Is there a need for the demographic information they had, if we wanted to request? Does the...
There is some demographic information in there, but not detailed.
Okay, so I'm not asking the right question. The, Mr. Vargas had said that he would provide us with the names and addresses and some telephone numbers. Does the staff need that information?
Or do we want that too?
I'm not sure whether we want that. I'm sensitive to privacy issues. I'm not sure we need it to make a decision, but that's not my decision, that's...
Right, well, we would discuss that, but before we did, I wanted to see if you all needed it on file for any reason.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, all right. So it wasn't thirty minutes, it's thirty days. I'm making sure that I understand that.
There's emails if you want. Those are the ones ran yet.
Okay.
If you make a recommendation tonight, we will deliver it formally to the trustees on Monday.
Okay, all right.
And then their deadlines would kick in from there.
Okay, all right.
So what would lend itself then for the thirty days? Like what would be a reason why, instead of making a decision tonight?
Like a work session or anything like that?
That's entirely the zone, the commission's decision-making process.
If the decision is made tonight by the board, then we need to meet again in order for that decision to be made, correct? I mean, we're not permitted to meet outside of this forum.
You could, but we'd have to, it would have to be a public, publicly noticed meeting. Doesn't have to be a hearing. You don't have to take testimony, but you have to have a public, publicly noticed meeting and we would have to take care of that. So we would need a minimum of, I don't know, fifteen days notice to get all that together.
That's what I'm getting at.
Ten days is what the...
If we don't make the decision tonight...
We have to publish in a newspaper of popular circulation, meaning subscription, something people pay for, at least ten days prior to the date of the meeting.
Unless it is chosen at this meeting and articulated in the meeting, then you don't have to.
Right.
Okay.
But that's only if you feel you need to. I mean, there's nothing that says you have to extend it beyond.
Okay. Well, I think we've heard a lot, and we've just heard so much from everyone, same themes over and over again. And we've had the applicant who is patiently waiting through two meetings, but I also see the sensitivity of this, any job worth doing is worth doing right the first time and not trying to get it right ten times. And, you know, and that's just really important, that we're doing it pretty much by the book. I think that's important and that we feel good about it. So, how do you want to move this along? I mean, we can start with a motion or we can start with discussion. It's either way.
I think we should start with a discussion.
Yep.
I guess I'd just like to summarize from what I've captured in all the notes from everybody that came here and spoke. You know, we're here for a, not a site plan, but a zoning, a, a application for changing the zone from agricultural to residential.
It's two.
Two, two.
Yeah, two of the five.
But they're the same thing.
Yeah. Well, one is... One is a different, but yes, but wanting to change a yes to the same thing.
Overall, we're trying to basically, the application is to, they're applying for changing this combined zone into a residential zone. And that's what, that's what we're here tonight for. What I heard was a lot of reasons why we're really concerned as citizens about the density and all the other implications that this change would make to the surrounding community. Notwithstanding the number of, you know, the overall density and the kind of restrictions and limitations that one might consider to put on the site plan, I don't know if that goes on the zoning application or the zoning approval, or does that go into the site plan?
Site plan, it's called specific site plan.
Which, we're not there yet.
No.
Well, are you asking about density?
Yes.
Okay, because this is a PUD.
Okay, because this is a PUD, you can address that at the PUD zoning level.
Yes, you can do that now.
That can be a condition within the zoning approval.
So that could be a part of this decision here tonight?
It could, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If you wish, run.
So, and can I clarify that we look at Section 1706 as our guiding criteria?
I believe not.
I think it's 06. I know it's Article 17. Is it 06.9?
06.9.
I think so. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So will that help you all get your bearings on discussion?
Yeah.
Here, Jeff, I'll help. That's all right. It starts here. We can go point by point.
17.
I mean, is that, is that where you want to start? Find it.
I'm still getting there.
It's not the same in the new one.
It's not. Perhaps you can pull it up on the screen.
Page 108, Mom.
Pardon?
It's on 108. It's the next page.
Do you mind putting it up on the screen for us? Because it'll be on the screen.
Okay.
Because my book is not.
Might take me a minute now.
Evidently.
At least you have a book.
Well, it has the same criteria. It doesn't matter. It's just on a different page.
Oh, it's the same criteria?
It might take me.
Just a different page number.
Yes.
Yeah. Might as well.
If you were here the last time, I always try to say, I try not to do this like the Bob Newhart Show, but I, it happens.
All right, go ahead. It'll be on the page.
So, a planned unit development zoning classification shall only be approved when the following criteria are satisfied. Yes?
What do we, I'm sorry, we were asking yes if it, if it does comply with that?
Yes. The first one is a planned unit development complies with the purpose and the intent of the zoning resolution.
And the zoning resolution is?
The book you're looking at.
The entire book.
Well, I mean, I mean, if we're going back, then if we can address density, then for me, that's a big part that's no.
Okay. We'll see if it falls into another category, but I think you're correct.
What does everybody else think?
It's what I think.
What about Mom?
What do you think?
Well, I know, there's a couple of things, I think.
You're not bashful, are you?
No, no, no.
He chooses his words carefully.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I just, we can go through this, these criteria. You know, and I just admonished the board that, you know, we're a volunteer board. We represent the residents. And, you know, it's, it's difficult after hearing everybody. You know, we're, we are your voice to the trustees. That's basically what we're here for. You know, I just don't know. I know Mr. Over wants a decision tonight, asks for one from us. We don't have, we're a recommending board. We have no authority to change the zoning. It's the trustees that do that. So, you know, I look at as your voice to the trustees and staff. We can start going through this, but with the amount of opposition that's been against this or for this application, you know, it's going to be a tedious thing to try to work through this. But I'm willing to.
You mean all 10 points?
All 10 points. It's, you know, I think it's a little premature, maybe. I, I don't know really where to go from here. You know, to recommend approval with conditions, that's where I think we're going to get bogged down into. There's going to be so many conditions that, that's what worries me.
Okay. You have some thoughts? I'm watching your face.
I do.
Please tell us.
Okay. Just try to keep us focused, I guess. I mean, what we're looking at is caption, criteria for planned unit development zoning approval. I mean, that's our job, right, in a nutshell. And the first criteria says planned unit development zoning classification shall only be approved when the following criteria are satisfied. That's mandatory. Shall only be approved where the following criteria, all of these criteria are satisfied. Most of the criteria in there focus on compatibility and impact. Let's just start with those two subjects. The burden is going to be on the developer to convince us and the trustees that we have sufficient information regarding compatibility and impact. Let's just start with those two subjects. I don't think that's happened here. These people don't think that's happened. I understand it's a two-step process, but you're right. How do you decide that criteria without information? Ideally, you get some sort of a rough site plan. But if you get no information, you can't address these 10 criteria. So the developer's got to give you some information. Well, what do we know? We know he wants to develop at 2.7 density. The lots are under a fifth of an acre. They're under .2. And the setbacks are 5 feet. It's a sardine can. And I don't know how much more we need to know than that he has not met his burden with regard to those two criteria, which are throughout those 10 subjects. Impact on the immediate communities, impact on the total community, compatibility. He hasn't convinced us of anything in that regard. So I think you're in a position to recommend to the trustees tonight to disapprove this or to not, to deny the, the application. Thanks.
Can we see the other criteria that after the seven, or is it seven of the last criteria?
No, there's 10.
No, there's 10.
Thank you.
They're also on the website. The zoning resolution is on the website.
I can't read all of it.
Oh, you're going to blow it up?
And that's what I'm getting to.
And I think that's where you were going to with it.
You know, it's, as Jim has pointed out, I mean, it's, you know, and I respect Mr. Over wanting a decision. We don't want to drag it on. But like I said, we represent you. We are your voice to the trustees.
Can I ask what criteria has it answered? That what, what you're not satisfying?
What, I'm not, I haven't been through this criteria. I know, I don't know what Jim exactly was referring to except number one. I, I don't, he was talking about the density. I think that probably is met. Specifically what Jim was referring to, I'm not sure. I'm just, pardon?
Look at number three.
Number three says the proposed zoning and the conditions and requirements incorporated with the resolution approving the PUD zoning district provide minimum impact on the surrounding development. We have it.
And I'm just saying, you know, Oswald, we are the residents representatives to the trustees. I mean, this is ultimately going to be made by the trustees anyway. We're a recommending board. And I just don't feel comfortable with the amount of opposition that's been through this and the questions and the lack of information, I guess. You know, I, I think we could probably get to someplace to recommend, but there'd be so many conditions that I, I don't even know where to start on this, to tell you the truth.
See, at this stage, though, the township doesn't require a plan.
Right, and I think that could have been possibly a mistake on your part by including a, a site plan concept because, I mean.
Kevin, how would you have answered the questions without that?
Well, and I, that's true. It's, it's difficult to.
We wouldn't be able to answer number one without that. I mean, that's a, that's a truth right there.
I realize we're in the stage of changing the zoning. And, you know, on the other hand, that's why I asked you when we started the meeting is when your development company purchased the property. And, you know, there's risk involved. It's a speculative purchase and.
Well, I believe the reason that you do this in a two-step process is because you don't force the applicant to go to a lot of expense and engineering if they don't know what kind of a zoning or density that we're going to get. Because what happens as soon as I submit a plan, I mean, you've heard some of the comments out here. Soon as I submit a plan, then we're going to get into the short grass of through streets and connectivity and, and all that kind of stuff. And I realize there's options and there's different ways to design the interior street systems and, and whatnot. But, you know, it's, it's going to take quite a bit of engineering and expense to go through that when we don't know that we're going to have an approved.
So I guess I would argue we were not asking for a site-specific plan at this point, but what you have provided is planning information in terms of the density. So just talk about that right off the bat.
Right.
The density of what you're planning here is not consistent with what is in this zoning resolution. 100 houses in, so you're talking about the, the density of?
That's, that's what was requested. We, we requested exactly the same thing across the street in Beaver Creek, 2.7. They approved that with 2.5 units to the acre.
So our land use plan has a different density in it than the incorporated section of the township. This is the unincorporated section.
We were consistent with both applications because they were submitted somewhat close to the same time. It went through faster at Beaver Creek at the, at the city level before we got through the process here. So it just so happened that the applications, the requested density was the same for both developments. City of Beaver Creek approved it at 2.5 units to the acre. I know a lot of people don't care what the city of Beaver Creek does. But you know, a lot of, a lot of communities have transitional zoning areas for specifically this kind of reason. Sugar Creek Township, for an example, has a transitional zoning that they use wherever they have a zoning that's up against the municipality.
But we don't have it.
I know you don't, but I mean, I, I point that out.
You know, and on your point of the expense of, you know, this two-step process, you know, and that's why I asked you when you purchased property, because there's always the possibility of, you know, contingencies in purchases of land. You bought it under, you know, it was zoned Ag 1 and commercial. You know, there's always room in a contract for a contingency. You know, we'll close this property based on getting the zoning changed. You know, you can't assume that if you buy an agricultural property that because you're a developer or whatever you are, commercial, if you, you can't assume that it's going to be changed all the time. You know? It's just difficult for me.
I don't think anybody's suggesting that we have to have a full specific site plan.
Right, no, I'm not.
This is the hand we're dealt. This is the framework in which all of us have to, to handle this matter.
Right.
So I think these criteria have to be addressed by the developer in every case in this context.
If I might, you know, one of the issues that's been a big issue is traffic. And I will tell you that we have met with the township staff. We've met with county staff and regional planning. There's a, there's a traffic circle planned at that four-way intersection. And they're studying the, the traffic studies on that. We're adding to that traffic study with our, both developments and cooperating with the school district so that we have kind of a combined traffic study that gives a picture of all the developments that's being foreseen in the near future. So, so the trap, the, the regional traffic issues, particularly Indian Ripple Road and Alpha Bell Brook Road are being studied. And I can assure you that the folks at Green County are not going to approve of any kind of construction drawings without us pledging whatever right of way needs to come off of our property with whatever construction improvements that, that we might participate in. Likewise, with the drainage issues, you know, the Ohio Revised Code handles that stuff. So we're not allowed to discharge any more water than what's coming off the site to the downstream property owners. So what that means is our engineer has to calculate all the impervious surfaces, driveways, rooftops, streets, and then size a detention basin, a stormwater detention system that's going to make what I just said happen or not happen, you know, in the case of the downstream property owners. So a, a lot of the engineering questions that have been the concerns of a lot of the discussions in here haven't occurred because that engineering hasn't been completed yet. We know, we know what we have to accomplish. And plans are never going to, final plans are never going to get approved in this county until those objectives are met.
That is true.
Bob, and I think what, what I think Jim is saying too is you're not going to get more information. You have the information before you. What you have to do is take that information you have before you now in conjunction with the criteria to make your decision.
Right, and I, I understand, and I appreciate that. It's just that, I'm just basically talking to the board members. If we're going to do something with conditions, prepare for a long night. I was, you know.
Well, no, there is truth to that. And the other piece of truth to that is that we don't necessarily have all the information to address each of these. It would, it would take a very long time to say what those recommendations or what those conditions would be if we're going to make a recommendation for approval with conditions. And I, I think that we may end up missing one or two of those, even in this discussion we're having.
Right, so are you saying then it's an all or nothing, approve or disapprove?
Or.
I mean, our choices are approve as.
We have 30 days. I mean, you know what I'm saying? We.
That's up to you, chair.
It's not. It's up to all of us. So.
What, what changes in 30 days? Are you going to get more information? No. The developer has to give us enough information to suggest that all of these criteria are met. That hasn't happened here.
Well.
What are you thinking, Jim? I see you're taking a lot of notes.
Jeff, what do you think?
Well, I mean, if I were to hang my hat on anything, I would say it would be number three. And it would be, we're missing sufficient information to be able to say that he's adequately addressed that. And we can be more specific about exactly what's missing.
Would it, do you think that the application's inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan or prospective 2024? Or 2040, I'm sorry.
You don't have to answer that.
Is that the land use plan that we're using? Or are we using the 2012 one?
Perspective 2040 is the county.
2040 is a different document.
I was like, I know which one you're talking about.
So they are, right now, not day different.
In an estate of flux.
In an estate of flux.
And it's been approved or not approved?
Not.
Not at the, not at our level, it hasn't been.
So then we aren't, that's not.
The only thing we can go by is when it's approved.
Correct, correct.
Which has density listed in it.
Correct.
It's online too.
Motion.
He's taking a picture.
You have a choice.
Well, I can make a motion, but I mean, I don't. If someone else wants to make a motion, I'll.
We haven't heard from you.
There we go.
Rick.
I think there's a lot of, a lot of concerns with this. I think that this development, especially the Arlington place that I think it is, is, has a lot of issues already. And just because of, just because you've got a plot of land that you think you could develop doesn't necessarily mean it should be developed. And I think there's a lot of concern. My concern is that, and having been in the situation where a downstream property caused flooding on my property years ago, I understand. flooding on my property years ago, I understand that where your guys' concerns are. And I also understand from the developer's side that sometimes they can put things in there to resolve that.
And you've got to remember, you know, the developer, the owner of the property, go in there tomorrow and cut every tree on that property down. I mean, has every right to do that.
That's absolutely right. Absolutely right.
I mean, people need to be aware of that also. I mean, that just because, you know, that's a concern, it doesn't prevent the current owner from going in there bulldozing that whole property.
And on number three, I think that you're concerned about, I mean, that's kind of an arbitrary clause because it doesn't ask for anything specifically. It just says, impact the surrounding area. I mean, any, I don't care what we do, we're going to impact the surrounding area. I mean, if we put houses, we cut down trees, you know, I mean, I don't need a rezoning to cut down those trees.
Right, I understand that. And that's what I make aware. I mean, that's, you know, that's your right as the owner of the property. I mean, like I said...
That's not my intention, though.
No, I, I'm just saying that people need to be aware of that, that if somebody gets turned down, that you preserve the trees.
Quite frankly, it's our intention to try to save trees all around the development and in the backyards of the lots that we're going to sell because lots we're going to sell are going to be worth more with the trees in the backyard.
But, you know, it's...
We're asking in the application for 2.7. If you think 2.7 is egregious, I mean, I guess why not consider what was done on the other side of the street and say 2.5? I mean, or, you know, something because...
But that's apples and oranges because it was already, it's zoned for that. I mean, now you're zoned agricultural and you're trying to change it to residential, you know, and that's, that's my biggest problem is, you know, it's real estate speculative. I mean, I know you bought it on the intention of putting in a development and I'm not against the development, but that, the density is an issue, you know, and it's not zoned for right now. And I don't know that I'm prepared to recommend to the trustees that the zoning be changed right now under this current application.
And turn to Stan.
I'll entertain a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
Ed, did you have something?
Seems to me we have a conundrum here partly generated by our own criteria, which require information prior to a decision-making about something that doesn't necessarily require that information. What we could do, and this is not a recommendation, it's only, and it's based on what was done across the street as Mr. Ober suggested. These are the criteria applied to the zoning approval for the development across the street. Principal and accessory uses shall be those conditional and accessory uses permitted in, and then they list a zoning district that they want to use as a model. R1A in the case of the city, I think it's the same for ours. It's not R1AA, I know that. Maximum density for our PUD shall be 2.5 dwelling units per acre. Lots shall be a minimum of 60 feet wide. Any proposed lots which are directly adjacent to R1A residential lots shall be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. That would eliminate probably two parcels along the east edge of this plan. Any proposed, excuse me, minimum building setbacks are 30-foot minimum front yard, 35-foot minimum rear yard, except that lots abutting existing R1A lots. And Arlington is an RPUD, so it's not precisely the same, but let me proceed. 35-foot minimum rear, except those existing, except those lots abutting existing R1A lots which shall be a minimum 50-foot rear yard setback. You can see what's happening here. The city is looking at a very similar situation. Their adjacency is Tara. Okay. But otherwise, this is right across the street, similar in size, overall size, a little bigger than what we're dealing with. But what this does is break the logjam. If you recommend to the trustees that they approve under these thoughtful and carefully considered conditions, then the trustees have a starting point for setting their own conditions, accepting the ones that you recommend or making a different decision altogether. But we've broken the logjam and leapt over the conundrum created by codes and actions of other bodies and so on and so forth. Because as you suggested, Mr. Geis, it's really hard to come up with these conditions wrong from nowhere.
As far as the logjam...
So I decided to share this just from that perspective, that this could be a way to move this along without actually approving any plans.
Well, it's definitely a thought.
We're not here to approve a plan.
It's definitely a thought. I'm, I'm concerned with adopting conditions or language from the incorporated section.
There are others, by the way.
No, I, I respect that. I really do. I just don't know that that's the solution on the fly here tonight and I...
I feel it's not because, again, township.
Right.
It was supposed to be a whole way of developing it differently versus city.
Right.
I mean, I feel like there's a distinction and it is written here versus what's in the cities.
And I don't think he was necessarily suggesting that you accept the same conditions that the city did, but that was just sort of giving you some direction as to how to address, how to address conditions, if that's what you would choose to do more than saying.
I hear that.
How do we address those conditions without all these people in the room?
Point well made.
And that's why I keep coming back to, you know, regardless of the land use plan, I mean, we're here to represent you as residents because that's what we're, we're your neighbors also. You know, and there's, I'm just not comfortable with the way it's gone right now and to make this a decision. So, I mean, I have no, I guess I can make a motion and we'll see what happens with the board.
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
If the board recommends disapproval and that recommendation goes forward to the committee?
The trustees.
The trustees.
The trustees. Does the trustee then open up another forum with a...
Yes.
They have to do that one way or the other.
Yeah, that's why I say the logjam's going to be broken.
It will be broken.
Because it's the trustee's decision.
It just won't be on our shoulders. Correct.
I mean, I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I, from the feedback from the residents and I, I don't have any other choice but to recommend or make a motion to the trustees to reject the application 837. I don't know how I need to word this, Dawn, because we went through this on the land use plan. I don't want to double negative it.
We want to make sure we get it right.
Well, I don't have my book in front of me. Can I say it for a second?
Yes.
We did clarify that, so we can't do that.
I don't, I'm not trying to kick a can down the road, but like I say, we have three options, approve, deny...
So it's a two-step process.
Or approve with conditions. And I just think we've discussed conditions already and that's, doesn't seem to be going anywhere. So my only option is to make the motion to deny case number 837 and recommend the trustees do not approve the application.
Before, we have a second on that. We're deferring to general counsel to make sure that we get that right out the gate because we don't want to come back and have to redo this again because we didn't get it right.
No, you can, you can make a motion to deny the application and that can be voted on. Depending on the vote...
Right.
You make a motion to...
A new motion may have to be made. It's just a fact.
Right.
Yeah, but you can make a motion for denial.
To recommend.
I recommend, I'll make a motion to recommend denial of case 837 to the Beaver Creek Township
We need a second to move that.
I'll second it.
Discussion one more time among the board. Anything? Okay.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Okay.
We have a minute.
Christine, you need to notify the public?
Yes. Could you discuss the process for what happens next as it moves forward? It's 10 days, I believe.
Well, it'll go Monday.
Board will undoubtedly know what this decision was, but we are bound to formally present the decision to the board at their next, within 10 days. Their next meeting is Monday at 5:00.
5:00 o'clock.
In this room. And all that will be, will be a formal announcement that the zoning commission voted in this way about this issue.
And Stan provides...
And then they will set a date for their public hearing on the question. I have no idea when that will be, although it has to be within...
It has to be within 30 days of when they are presented with it. So within, if it's presented to them on Monday, the 11th, they have 30 days to schedule their public hearing.
Happy New Year.
Or, excuse me, they have to schedule their public hearing within the 30-day period.
How is that advertised?
It will be when the meeting is open to the public on YouTube. It has to be advertised...
They do it in the Zena Gazette.
For 10 days.
For 10 days in the, no, I think it's in the Dayton Daily News.
Oh, you do it in the Dayton Daily News? They do it in the newspaper.
Is it all swan the county website?
It's also on the township website, usually on the other social media as well.
So does staff present this decision to the trustees?
Trustees.
Yes.
And is that provided with any background information or just a...
Not until the actual hearing.
Okay.
Well, we will, we will send information packets to the trustees the week prior to that hearing. In the meantime, we will also send a public hearing notice to the same people we've sent it to before. If you've gotten a public hearing notice about this process, you'll get a public hearing notice about the trustees meeting.
The ears.
So they have to schedule a public hearing.
No, they have to schedule it within 30 days.
They have to have their meeting within 30 days.
30 days of the date that is presented to them, which presumably will be Monday.
Okay, so December 11th through January 11th, we can expect another forum with the trustees?
Right.
Well, I'm sure holidays, I mean, right? Those, like Christmas, what's that, like a Monday? Is that probably not counting?
No.
It does count? It does count. Holidays do count.
Here, I'll just confirm for you all.
It'll be shortly after the first of the year, but I can't tell you exactly when. We haven't looked at that.
Upon receipt of the recommendation from the zoning commission, the board of township trustees shall schedule a public hearing. The date of said hearing shall not be more than 30 days from the receipt of the recommendation from the zoning commission.
All right. So that ends the discussion on this particular case, correct?
Everybody approve the minutes.
Okay. Next, we're going to approve minutes. Motion to approve the minutes for November, wasn't it the 2nd?
There's two different ones.
There's two.
So we'll do November 2nd first.
November 2nd first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 2nd, 2023.
I'll second.
Do second.
Mr. Geis.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Geis.
That's the other date.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
I don't have one.
The minutes from November 3rd, 2022.
November 3rd. Motion to accept.
I so move.
A second.
Okay. Did you get those?
Ms. Porter's?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
And I would like to say on the record, thank you for being awesome and getting us those like that. Good job. Thank you.
Yes. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion here. I need to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll second.
That's, that's why we politely ask people to walk up to the microphone when they speak so that she can get a good recording.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned.
What's that?
Come back.